Tuesdays, the 7th session of the Half Moon Bay City Council. Before we begin, Mr. Hernandez will explain our Spanish language capability here for those who would like to hear the meeting in Spanish.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Muy buenas noches. Le queremos dejar saber a todos ustedes que esta reunión será interpretada en el español. Para poder acceder al canal de audio, usted tendrá que hacer clic en el botón de interpretación, que será un icono de un globo o un icono de un mundo que aparecerá en la barra de tareas de su plataforma de Zoom. Después va a aparecer un menú y en ese menú entonces usted podrá seleccionar su idioma. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, and I now see the interpretation icon on the bottom screen. Okay, let's start with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Here.
Councilmember Rarback.
Here.
Councilmember Penrose. Vice Mayor Raddick.
Here.
Mayor Brownstone.
Here, and Councilmember Penrose, you're on mute in case you did try them.
I'll just state for the record that Councilmember Penrose is on the meeting.
Great. Okay, so welcome everyone and we will now open up for our public forum. For those who are joining a meeting for city council meeting for a first time, this is a time to discuss any item that you like that is not on the agenda for the evening. So any agenda, any item that's been agendized is not up for discussion. You will have an opportunity to comment on those items when we address those items on the agenda. But you can talk about anything else that's not a topic on the agenda. And if you go into the participants icon, you can raise your hand. You'll see a symbol for raising your hand and see how many people would like to speak and then determine the timing. So so far, I see two hands raised. Would anyone else like to speak during this public forum? Section here. Going once, twice. Okay, so I think we could set the clock for three minutes and then we'll see how many more hands. If we get more than 10 hands change that. So how does that sound? All right, just now?
Yeah, sure. Our first speaker is David Rakowski. David, you have three minutes.
Hello, actually, I'm Joanne Rakowski. I should have changed my name on the thing. I'm a Coastside resident and a member of Faith in Action Bay Area and the Coastside Immigrant Advocacy Group. So thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening about the urgent need for housing on the coast side that will serve those who are low income, very low income, and extremely low income. These income categories for 2021 describe so many people who currently work in the stores and restaurants or provide the delicious foods and other agricultural products that make Half Moon Bay so attractive to the visitors who boost the economy of the city. By way of reference, though, the category of extremely low income has a maximum annual income of $36,400, which is way more than the average $25,000 that a farm worker makes annually. Many of us spoke about the urgent need for housing at a recent meeting. The city council facilitated the comment period, including translation, and listened respectfully. And for that, I thank you. But now I ask you to take actions that will make a difference. What actions will the city of Half Moon Bay take that will actually lead to the changes that will result in more housing? Changes in zoning? Incentives? Removal of existing bureaucratic barriers? Active support of proposed products? Creating a safe parking program for RV dwellers? This is merely a laundry list. But I believe that Half Moon Bay must consider all innovative solutions in a coordinated way. And by that, I mean coordinated with the unincorporated San Mateo County and with Pacifica, so that it will benefit all of our coast side housing challenged neighbors. I further believe that all possible housing options need to be considered and they need to be considered now. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments? Next speaker, please.
Thanks, Joanne. Our next speaker is Megan Ray. Megan, you have three minutes.
Thank you, and I really appreciate the council's openness and soliciting comments from people. And I think that Joanne just spoke beautifully, and I would reiterate what she said with respect to the immediacy of the need to act, as well as the coordination of both the city and the unincorporated parts of San Mateo. Certainly with particular attention to the folks who do help grow our and harvest our food. I think there was a report in the review recently where there were families, you know, three families living in a three-bedroom trailer, which is just heartbreaking. So whatever we can do to support the council and the community and really attacking this problem, we are here to support you. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Thanks, Megan. And next we have Belinda. Belinda, you have three minutes.
Good evening, council members. How are you doing? And to the community, I am coming today to speak about housing. And I think I've been coming for a couple of years now talking about this. And we've come as a community and children have come, families have come, individuals have come. And we've been hearing their voices loud and clear with us. And I just want to review that there's just a huge need for housing here. But in addition to the housing, there's urgent, there's an urgent need for folks to understand that our families don't have equitable rental opportunities. Like they just, even if we think like, you know, okay, how much time is it going to take to build housing, which we definitely need? But also, how are we building practices that have equitable opportunities for folks that don't have the highest credit score, for folks that don't have, you know, maybe like the most the highest income, but still will do everything they can to pay that rent? Or, you know, how do we take out the practices that are really, really targeting, you know, just high-income earners to be able to live here on the coast? We have had more and more families desperately seeking housing. And we have gone through ourselves. I myself, as a social worker, have sat with families, tried to get applications in, try to fill out support, try to help them, and they get denied, like constantly. People don't even take a look at them. So not only do we not have affordable housing, we also don't have housing that even families can apply for. And I know everybody's doing, you know, there's so much care for the community, but you know, while we see like there's money that's being invested into other areas of projects like Carter Park, 4.5 million. And then we see children in our schools who are just wondering if they're going to have a place to live tomorrow. We have kids that are literally, you know, in a homeless situation because they don't have housing and families that are being forced to move out. And so I know we've been talking about it and I know you all definitely care. I just, as Joanne shared, really thank you, Joanne, that what is our next step of action? Because we are losing families every day. Individuals and even our homeless population are being forced to live in dire conditions. I was working with a man this week, actually for the last month, that really
15 seconds, Belinda.
Under the bridge. He doesn't want to live under the bridge because it's so dangerous. But there's not even a car, a trailer, or a camper that we can even find for him. So we're really begging to try and get some resources. Thank you.
Thanks, Belinda. Our next speaker is Patty Ramirez. Patty, you have three minutes.
Okay, gracias. ¿Si me escuchan?
Sí, muy buenas noches, señora Ramírez.
Gracias por atender.
Señora Ramírez, permítete un momentito.
Es mi tercera vez que voy a hablar a través de abogar por las familias.
Hello?
Yes, we hear you, Victor.
Okay, señorita Ramírez, hágame un favor, mantenga sus trozos breves para que de esa manera todo mundo pueda escuchar lo que usted tenga que decir. ¿Sí?
Claro, entiendo.
Gracias. Adelante, por favor.
Okay, va de nuevo. Quiero agradecer. Quiero agradecer a los concejales que atiendan a mi tercera vez de llamado y abogar por las familias. Y especialmente porque las familias están buscando desesperadamente dónde vivir.
Okay, so thank you all council members. And again, for this being my third call and most importantly for all the families, especially for all of them that are looking for a place. Adelante, señorita.
Y yo soy la familia que vivía en el 555 de la Kelly Street. Y busqué desesperadamente desde entonces dónde vivir. Yo pagaba 2,800 y de pagar eso ahorita estoy pagando 5,000.
Okay, so and I'm the family that used to live on 555 Kelly Street. And I was desperately looking. My rent was $2,800 and I am now currently paying 5,000.
Adelante, señorita.
Y esto es algo que se ha venido viviendo desde hace tiempo. Pero definitivamente vuelvo a repetir, yo no veo una acción concreta por parte de la ciudad.
Okay. And again, this has been a long time coming. And once again, I don't see any concrete actions on behalf of the city.
Sí, señorita.
Y de nuevo, sé que ellos van a tomar acción, pero yo quiero verla. Quiero que sea real.
Again, I know that the city will take an action, but I want it to be real. I want to see it.
Hay muchas familias que ahorita desesperadamente buscan un lugar. Y sobre todo, yo siento que les afecta en el estado de salud, en el estado de educación. Y también hacen que estas familias se sientan solas, aisladas, sin un apoyo por parte de la gobernatura de la ciudad.
Thanks. So a lot of families are actually looking for a place. It affects them in their health. It affects them with their education. And families feel alone with no support from the city or the government, local government.
Agradezco mucho que me escuchen, pero también agradecería más ver la acción de la ciudad.
Thank you very much for listening, but I would really thank you even more for taking action on behalf of the city.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Our next speaker, please.
Allison Little, you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. I just really want to echo the comments around the need for both affordable housing and also more options for those who are currently really struggling to pay their rent or maybe they can't apply for various reasons. I just, I really feel like it's so important that we as a community don't turn our backs on other members of our community or only make room for wealthy people on the coast. You know, I think this is something that's happening all over the Bay Area. And I know, we all know that it's a really awful. But I would love to see members here in Half Moon Bay really take a stand and for something different. And I also just want to say, you know, as a psychotherapist, I am really deeply aware of the emotional impact and the psychological impact of, you know, having to leave your home in your community and that this is a really big deal. And so I really want to honor and respect all of the people who are trying to live and work here and hope that the city government can find a good response. Thank you.
Allison.
Thanks, Allison. Last speaker is Juana Ruano.
Sí, buenas noches.
Buenas noches, señorita. Habla Víctor Hernández. Soy el traductor del español. Este, me puede hacer un favor y mantener sus trozos de lo que vaya a decir un poco manejables para que de esa manera todo mundo pueda escuchar lo que usted tenga que decir?
Sí, está bien.
Muchas gracias. Adelante, señorita.
Pues yo estoy aquí como familia de tantos años que he vivido aquí en Jamon Bay. Tengo 25 años viviendo en Jamon Bay.
So I'm here as a family. I've been living here for a long time. I've been here in Half Moon Bay for 25 years.
La amistad de mi vida está aquí. Amo Jamon Bay por el clima y por la salud de mis hijos.
Half my life. I've been here in Half Moon Bay. I love Half Moon Bay. I'm here on behalf of the health for my kids.
Pero estamos necesitados de nuevas viviendas accesibles para que podamos pagar lo que ganamos nos rinda para pagar la renta.
So but we desperately need affordable living. What we make barely covers the rent.
Les vuelvo a repetir, si me están cobrando 3,000 dólares de renta en mi casa y están solo entrando 4,000 dólares a mi casa, no me alcanza a pagar todo.
You know, I'm going to say it again. If I'm paying $3,000 in rent and there's only $4,000 coming into the household, it's not enough to pay for everything.
Necesitamos pagar la basura, la luz, el agua, el teléfono. Todos los billes no alcanzan. De dónde sacamos dinero para pagar tanta renta.
Gracias. So, you know, we need to pay all of the utilities, PG&E, garbage, water, electricity, all the bills. Where are we going to get the money to pay all of this? It's just not enough.
Y así como yo, habemos muchísimas familias.
And just like myself, there are many other more families like this.
Y yo les pido de favor a todos ustedes que hagan algo ya por nosotros.
So I ask you, please, do something on our behalf.
Somos muchos emigrantes que estamos aquí solamente que venimos a trabajar y vivir una vida mejor.
So there are many immigrants. We come here for work and for a better life.
Así como me escucharon que tengo tantos años aquí, no he parado de trabajar y sigo. Ya estoy grande, tengo dificultades, pero aquí estoy.
So as you already know, I've been here so many years. I never stopped working. I'm a little older now, but I continue with the struggle. I'm here, doing it.
Ustedes son nuestra voz por nosotros. Ustedes necesitan ayudarnos y hablar por nosotros. Nosotros confiamos en ustedes.
Gracias. So you guys are our voice. You guys need to help us and speak for us. We trust in you.
Y yo pienso que cada uno de ustedes tiene un hijo, una hija, un papá, una mamá. Que ustedes quisieran verlos en un hogar que estén viviendo a gustos y sin problemas.
Gracias. So, you know, I think each one of you here has a son, has a daughter, has a mom or dad, sister, brother. And you would all like to see your family members living comfortably, problem-free.
Y así como les vuelvo a repetir, amo Jamon Bay por nuestro clima, pero también necesitamos nuevos recursos para seguir pagando nuestra renta como podamos.
Again, I'm going to say it again. I love Half Moon Bay because of its weather, but we need new resources, other resources, to continue to pay our rent.
Gracias por escucharme y espero que estas palabras que dijimos cada uno de nosotros, ustedes nos ayuden y no se queden en el viento. Gracias.
So thank you again for listening. I hope that my words are our words. Help you do something and they don't just kind of fly away into the wind.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Maria Guadalupe. Maria?
Buenas, señor. ¿Cómo le va? Este, habla Víctor Hernández. Soy el traductor del español. Si me hace usted el favorcito, mantenga su, lo que usted quiera decir manejable y de esa manera todo mundo pueda escuchar lo que usted tenga que decir. ¿De acuerdo? Gracias. ¿Podría subir su volumen un poquito más o hablar en el micrófono un poquito más cerquitas a su boca?
Sí, sí, está bien. Ah, pues antes que nada, buenas tardes. Pues yo, mi nombre es María Guadalupe. Yo, la necesidad que tenemos sobre las viviendas es bastante desesperable, puesto que creo que más que desgaste como emocional, tanto como mental, pues porque tengo familia grande, que son que tengo tres niños. Y pues creo que más que nada todos necesitamos como un poco de espacio y pues aquí.
Okay, well, so before anything, good evening. My name is María Guadalupe and I know that the need here is a desperate one. And I think more so it's an emotional and a mental thing. And more so because I have a big family. I have three kids.
Adelante, señorita.
Y pues sí, creo que más que nada eso, que cada quien pues necesitamos un poco de espacio y pues más que nada por ellos que son niños y pues ya ve aquí está súper caro. Y pues sí, necesitamos más viviendas y económicos pues. Por ahora solo mi esposo trabaja y pues sí, no, con tres niños pues no, no es suficiente.
So and yes, you know, we all need a little space. And you know, more so for the kids and how it is, you know, around here, it's super expensive. So we all need more accessible living. You know, my husband works, but you know, it's with three kids. It's not enough.
Adelante, señorita.
Y pues sí, más que nada eso, porque pues creo que habemos bastantes familias que por más que se busca pues está todo súper elevado y pues sí, necesitaríamos más que nada que sí vamos a apoyarán como con eso. Necesitamos más viviendas de bajos recursos.
So and yeah, that, you know, too many families looking, it's super expensive. And more support, more accessible living.
Algo más, señorita.
No, pues muchas gracias y esperamos que que pues nos escuchen, verdad, porque pues sí, es algo que de verdad sí se necesita.
And thank you very much. And I hope you guys listen because it's a huge need.
Thank you, Maria. Appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Cecilia Pedalosa.
Hello, everyone. I just want to like advocate for those who can't be here that we urgently Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So I just want to say that we urgently and we really need affordable housing. It will, like, we do have affordable housing. It'll reduce mobility, evictions, and unhealthy living conditions. And also, like, one of the moms mentioned, it reduces stress. It's, it can be very mentally like exhausting. And also, it impacts, for those who have big families, it impacts on the children's physical and mental health. So it's very important that we find ways to find affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia. Appreciate the comments. Next speaker or last speaker, please.
Aisha Barrow. Aisha, you have three minutes.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So thank you for everybody who spoke.
And to me, the need for affordable housing is very clear. And I know we've spent a couple meetings already talking about this. And I contrast that to the discussion we had on law enforcement, where we were talking about kind of what are we do, what are we solving for? For that topic, the what are we solving for wasn't clear. But for this one, it's so crystal clear that I would like to move the discussion from like, you know, like all the people talking and explaining the need that is crystal clear to talking about solutions. Now, what are the solutions? It's not even something that needs to be debated for that long or explained for that long. Anybody who lives in Jamon Bay sees it very clearly, even myself walking. This morning, the house right across the street from me was vacated and it's been empty. I don't know if they're selling it or not, but the people that were living there are no longer living there and they were renting. And just today, I saw one of them just walking by that house and looking at it. And I was thinking like, so those people were evicted, that house is empty. And she was looking at it probably wondering why is it that this house is empty when I had to move out? So to me, the need is crystal clear. We need to agendize it and we need to talk about solutions. And the solutions need to involve the whole community. There are lots of people, even those people who spoke, including myself, who could be in positions to host people. And like, let's talk about the culture in Jamon Bay. Let's talk about empowering the entire community to be able to help out and enabling people to help out and do that in a safe way. Thank you.
Thanks, Aisha. Next speaker is Eric Devote. Eric, you have three minutes.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you very much. I certainly just want to add my voice and support for affordable housing. I spoke on a countywide panel last year and there were some other people on the panel that were interested in the same ideas that I was trying to support, which was, you know, you obviously know the need, just as Aisha was saying, is crystal clear. But I think what we need to explore as a city is how to build into an affordable housing project the opportunity for a family to not only rent but also own part of that property. It is homeownership and the building up of equity that is going to change the systemic problem that we are dealing with right now. So there are other cities doing it. Another thing that other cities are doing, I was just reading the other day, is they are passing legislation to not allow investments in housing, like no investors owning housing. And I think we should explore that possibility as well. And finally, you know, building more expensive, beautiful homes does nothing to end the affordable housing crisis in our community. It's my opinion that we need to stop building, you know, expensive single-family homes and say, look, the need is dire. There are people tripled and quadrupled up in homes that they're renting and they have children living with them. It is not healthy for them. It's certainly not healthy for our larger community. And it's not acceptable to have that in our country and our community. So I'd love it if you guys would explore those issues.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Next speaker, please.
Alan Seen. You have three minutes.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you.
Hi, you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, yeah, I I think you're you're, I I'm a homeowner in Ocean Colony. I'm also an operator of a short-term rental. And I think you're 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 making an assumption that's not accurate to say that if I did not do short-term rentals, that I would be offering my house out for long-term rentals. That's just not the case. The reason I do short-term rentals is I, you know, I like to use my own house as well. I don't want it to be fully occupied and not available to me. So to to make this part of the affordable housing issue in Jamon Bay, I think is it's it's really misguided because it's not going to change, you know, the the way I use my my house and many other people, I think, you know, are not going to switch over and all of a sudden put this on the market for people to move into their places. So I really think you need to rethink, if if that's really what's driving this, I think it's misguided. I would also say that if you look at the number of units that are up for short-term rentals right now.
Alan, Alan, I'm sorry, but you're really beginning to move into a a topic that's agendaized, which is discussing our short-term rental policy this evening. So if you don't mind waiting till we speak to that topic versus now. This is for just talking about topics that are not on the agenda, okay?
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I joined I joined the meeting late. I thought that's what.
No, no problem.
Sorry about that.
No, appreciate it. Okay. All right. That now ends our public forum. And I would just like to point out that during our city manager updates, you know, I appreciate all the comments on this very important issue of low-income housing in Jamon Bay and the need for that. And we will, during city manager updates, we will have a update from staff on some of the things that the city is doing in the area of low-income affordable housing. So just to let you know that. We're now going to move on to proclamations and presentations. And we're going to begin with a presentation from Matthew regarding COVID testing vaccination volunteers.
Mr. Mayor, our council and all of our public that has joined us tonight. I am very excited and also humbled to be presenting this item. I'm joined by Corey Stalker, who's a management analyst in the city manager's office that works closely with me, as well as many of our volunteers that we've worked with over the last year. I will give just a brief background on this topic and then I will turn the time over to Corey, who will honor each of our volunteers. And then we'll have some comments from Chief Cosgrave from the Coastside Fire Protection District and Cynthia Sherrill from our Coastside CERT organization. As as many of you know, when COVID hit us early in 2020, there was a lot to learn, a lot of unknowns. But unsurprising, I think, to many of us, our community really, really pulled together to support each other. I remember last March and April conversations with our Coastside Collaborative of Nonprofits, where we met to talk about how to start to support and help individuals recover. At that time, I think we all had the hope that this was a short-term issue, never expecting what this year was going to look like. I know that several of our nonprofits pulled together to start a fund to support individuals and families that were struggling early on in the pandemic and raised hundreds of thousands of dollars to support many families in our communities. The response from our community was incredible. I saw more collaboration and more people pulling together and supporting each other than at any other time than I recall, but that's what our community does. And as we got into May, the county started providing resources to do COVID testing here on the coast, which was in great demand. I know it's something we looked at as a city and it was completely untenable financially for us to try to provide COVID testing to the community. And and luckily for us, the the county stepped in and took responsibility to make that happen. And as they explored the initial round of COVID testing, they looked for support, people that could come from the community and help, supplement the staff and the workers from the county and their contractors. And we knew where to turn. We immediately reached out to our Coastside CERT volunteers and Chief Cosgrave, and they answered the call. And many of our CERT members from the coast side. And for those of you who don't know, CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Team. It's a a group of individuals in the community who have been trained to respond and support individuals and others in the community during an emergency. And we have a growing and strong CERT presence here on the coast. And and it was members of those volunteer groups that that supported those initial testing sites. Those testing sites were limited and didn't meet the needs of everybody in our community. And towards the end of last summer, we reached out to the county to find out if there were ways we could offer more COVID testing opportunities. And they engaged with another contractor and worked with us to set up an ongoing site at one of our facilities. And our expectations were were low. We thought we'd we'd be able to test a few, you know, maybe a few dozen people a week and meet the needs of people who couldn't make some of the other testing sites. But that need grew very, very quickly. Our first week, I think we tested a few dozen people. The second week, we tested more than a hundred. And at the at the peak of the work that we were doing, we were testing more than four hundred and fifty people per week to make sure that people felt safe and were were staying healthy in the community. And that would not have been possible without our incredible staff, who gave their time and energy on Monday evenings to make sure that our facility was ready and that we had the resources we needed to offer the testing. But without the supplement of incredibly dedicated volunteers who didn't just show up once or twice to help provide a service to the community, but behaved as though it was their full-time job. They were there on time every single week. They stayed till the end every single week and they stayed with us for months and months to make sure that our community had access to testing. And tonight is just a little piece of what we want to do to recognize and thank these community members who have given their time and energy to make sure that testing was available to our community. They also volunteered to help when vaccinations became available. And it is through these volunteers that we were able to pull together with other government agencies and make sure that our community stayed healthy and safe during this pandemic. We have lots of other things planned for these folks. We really want to to shower them with our adoration and our appreciation. But tonight, we just wanted to acknowledge them publicly. And with that, I'll turn my time over to Corey, who will share the names of these volunteers and a little bit about the work that they did.
Thanks, Matthew. I do want to say on behalf of the city, I know I speak for all of us. We want to thank the volunteers for all of their work. It was selfless, it was committed, it was cold some nights where we were bundled up in multiple jackets. It was sprinkling outside and not a single person complained. It was a really great process. And I know we have an amazing, robust volunteer group on the coast side. And it's one more thing for us to be able to go to meetings and brag about the amazing volunteers that we have. I feel incredibly lucky to have the opportunity to work with all these different individuals working in emergency preparedness and especially via COVID-19. As much as it was a difficult situation, it was great because we were able to integrate with the community. I was able to meet more of the volunteers and I know that our staff really enjoyed working with them. I appreciated how collaborative the process was. If there was anything we wanted to tweak or change at these sites, everybody had great feedback, they were really creative, and we really appreciated everybody's positive attitude. It really made our Monday afternoons really easy for us. So I do want to thank the following twenty-seven volunteers that worked all of our different sites. We had the vaccination sites, we had our COVID testing sites that were at the senior center, that were at the Ted Adcock Center and that worked at Cunha Middle School. So I want to thank Frank Belknap, Marie Chwang, Mike Chwang, David Cosgrave, Megan Cosgrave, Michelle Dragony, Michelle Duke, Gail Evanary, Tim Foster, Linda Freezer, Judith Guerrero, Sue Holly, Dan Kenny, Sue Lim, Sarah Lopez-Luis, Jim Marsh, Dottie Petrowski, Rusty Rosenberg, Juan Sarabia, Tony Serrano Garcia, Cynthia Sherrill, Janet Stevens, Kent Taylor, Patrick Tierney, Cindy Watson, me, Wong, and Forrest Wonderlick for all of your incredible service and your selflessness. And I do want to hand it over to Cynthia Sherrill. She's one of the heads of our CERT group and to Chief Cosgrave to say a few words for the wonderful volunteers.
Corey and Matthew, thank you so very much. What a gracious appreciation you have offered us today. The COVID-19, when COVID-19, since it was a declared public health emergency and therefore within our mission, when you, Corey, when you called us to invite us to volunteer to assist at COVID testing sites, at first at Cunha Intermediate School and then at Our Lady of Pillar Catholic Church and finally at Ted Adcock Center, we were very pleased to step up and help. The Coastside team, the Coastside CERT team served every week for a year from June 2020 to June 2021 alongside the county and city employees. Chief David Cosgrave and I could not be more proud and grateful to the fifteen individuals who served faithfully, rain or shine, on these testing teams. The city staff took brilliant care of us and it was a pleasure to work together as a team at their well-organized testing sites. Matthew, you were awesome. We built camaraderie. We met a full cross-section of Jamon Bay residents. We conducted a ton of tests. We contributed to the local public health data and no one, not one person on our testing teams for a whole year, tested positive for COVID throughout throughout our year on the front line, so to speak. So on behalf of our loyal and indefatigable Coastside CERT COVID-19 volunteer testing team, thank you for this opportunity to be of service to the city of Jamon Bay. Chief?
Thank you, Cynthia. Thank you, Matthew and Corey, for recognizing all these volunteers. I would go out there week after week and 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 just drop in on them. I wasn't serving, doing that, but the it was a warm welcome from the city staff and all the volunteers and and everybody was working all together. In in CERT, we teach the FEMA curriculum, which teaches skills of safety and things like that. And it gave the city and the county someone to go to for a trained work staff that could adapt to many emergencies, knowing that they know how to take care of themselves and do things safely. So that's the basics of CERT. So I'm plugging that for everybody watching that hasn't been signed up for certain training at CoastsideCERT.com, at gmail dot com is the email. And I want to say that that asterisk you have on the bottom left there for Cynthia Sherrill needs to be an extra asterisk because she was the liaison that had to schedule all those people. And that's that's, I see some head shaking. Everyone realizes when you have to schedule people to show up and and sometimes she had to schedule people to show up in shifts. So we didn't have too many people and tell people, you know, we don't need you today. So that's a tough job too. But Cynthia was there to deal with that. And if there was anything that went on manpower-wise, she was the person that had to deal with any issues that came up. So I want to give a special shout out to Cynthia. And thank you guys for the recognition of the volunteers. We helped out with the CZU lightning fires, the debris flows that were possibly happening. We hope they're to be there for the city and and the coast side for any emergency that comes. And thank you for the recognition.
I want to acknowledge that Corey was the volunteer coordinator for the second half of all this. So thank you so much, Corey.
Well, thank you to everyone, all the volunteers, all the staff, Cynthia, Chief Cosgrave, for making this a really community effort and it's a lifesaving effort. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Our next presentation is we're going to have a first, Julissa Acosta from City Hall Staff will be making a presentation for Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. And receiving the proclamation will be Belinda Ariaga from ALAS.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, everybody, council members of the community. I am Julissa Acosta with the Admin Services Department and I am here to present the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation to Belinda Hernandez-Ariaga, who will be receiving it on behalf of ALAS. I have a few talking points to you regarding the Hispanic Heritage Month. The Hispanic Heritage Month is the official celebration of individuals whose ancestry can be traced back to Mexico, Central and South America, the Caribbean and Spain. The observation started at Hispanic Heritage Week in nineteen sixty-eight, but it was expanded to Hispanic Heritage Month in nineteen eighty-eight. As you can tell, this celebration doesn't start at the beginning of the month, but instead it starts on September fifteen to mark the Independence Day of El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, and Costa Rica, closely followed by Mexico on the sixteen, Chile on the eighteen, and Belize on the twenty-first. This celebration serves to highlight the obstacle. This celebration serves to highlight the obstacles that Hispanics and Latinos have overcome in the impact of the important contributions they make every day to our society and culture, especially in California, where thirty-nine point four percent of the population is Latino or Hispanic. This is the largest in the nation. And in Hackman Bay, where approximately thirty-one point five percent of our population is Latino or Hispanic. I will follow now to read the proclamation. Please note that I will follow, I will read it in Spanish after the English version. The proclamation reads, whereas from the early settlers of the New World to those reaching for the American dream today, Hispanics have shaped and strengthened our country. And whereas the month of September fifteen to October fifteen was designated as Hispanic Heritage Month by the United States Congress in nineteen ninety-eight, and whereas Hispanic, Latino, Latina, or Latinx individuals represent a wide range of nationalities and backgrounds, including Mexican, Puerto Rican, South or Central American, or other cultures or origins regardless of race. And whereas September fifteen was chosen to commemorate the anniversary of independence of five Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, and September sixteen for Mexico's independence. And whereas this year's theme is Esperanza, a celebration of Hispanic heritage and hope. And whereas the huge and significant impact of the Hispanic and Latinx cultures and centuries-old traditions are manifested in the achievements, customs, and laws of this state and nation. And whereas, like so many Americans, Hispanics and Latinos have overcome great obstacles to persevere and flourish in every sector of our society. And whereas Hispanic Americans continue to make important contributions to our society in American government, business, agriculture, armed forces, commerce, education, the arts, science, and sports. And whereas Hispanic Americans are one of the fastest-growing communities in this country and represent fifty-eight point nine million, or eighteen percent of US residents, thirty-nine point three percent of California's population, which signifies the nation's largest Hispanic population, and thirty-one point five percent of the population of the city of Hackman Bay. Now, therefore, be it known that the City Council of Hackman Bay declares September fifteen twenty twenty-one to October fifteen twenty twenty-one as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Hackman Bay. I will read the proclamation in Spanish now. Proclamación. Considerando que desde los primeros pobladores del Nuevo Mundo hasta los que hoy alcanzan el sueño americano, los hispanos han moldeado y fortalecido nuestro país. Y por cuanto el mes del quince de septiembre al quince de octubre fue designado como el mes de la herencia hispana por el Congreso de los Estados Unidos en mil novecientos ochenta y ocho. Y considerando que las personas hispanas y latinas representan una amplia gama de nacionalidades y orígenes, incluidas las culturas y orígenes mexicanos, puertorriqueños, sudamericanos, centroamericanos, independientemente de la raza. Y por cuanto el quince de septiembre fue elegido para conmemorar el aniversario de la independencia de cinco países latinoamericanos, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, y Nicaragua, y el dieciséis de septiembre por la independencia de México. Por cuanto el tema de este año es esperanza, una celebración de la herencia hispana y la esperanza. Y por cuanto el enorme y significativo impacto de las culturas hispana y Latinx y tradiciones centenarias se manifiestan en los logros y costumbres y leyes de este estado y nación. Y por cuanto los hispanoamericanos continúan haciendo importantes contribuciones a nuestra sociedad en el gobierno estadounidense, los negocios, la agricultura, las fuerzas armadas, el comercio, la educación, las artes, las ciencias, y los deportes. Y por cuanto los hispanoamericanos son una de las comunidades de más rápido crecimiento en este país y representan cincuenta y ocho punto nueve millones, o el dieciocho por ciento de los residentes de Estados Unidos, el treinta y nueve punto tres por ciento de la población de California, que representa la población hispana más grande del país, y el treinta y uno punto cinco por ciento de la ciudad de Hackman Bay. Ahora, por lo tanto, se resuelve que el Consejo Municipal de la Ciudad de Hackman Bay declara el quince de septiembre de dos mil veintiuno al quince de octubre de dos mil veintiuno como el mes de la herencia hispana en la ciudad de Hackman Bay. For twenty twenty-one, I would like to present this proclamation to the organization ALAS, Ayudando Latinos a Soñar, for their tireless contribution to the community, and especially for all of the hard work they've done the last, this last year in light of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And now I would like to ask Belinda if she'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Julissa. It's truly an honor to receive this from you. And on behalf of all the city council members and city council, city staff and city of Hackman Bay, it means a lot. Because as you heard tonight, we have a very hard-working Latino community. We have a very beautiful Latino community and a very faithful community that loves Hackman Bay. Just today, we were all gathered around for a special celebration of of Council Humanist's birthday, and a few of the folks said someone had gone to Hawaii to visit, and then others had gone to other places up and down in the United States. And everybody around the table said Hackman Bay is the best place to live. And it's a place where we want to be. And I know that our community feels the same. They want to contribute. They are contributing in so many ways. They're making a difference. They're giving back. They're they're celebrating. Also, that all of you have really opened the doors for our community to be seen in so many different ways. Each of you have made great progress in saying, we see you, we believe in you, we value you. And I want to also recognize that tonight to say thank you, city of Hackman Bay. Thank you to the staff and to all of you, city council, to for believing in our Latino community, for believing in the children, for valuing what we said is esperanza, which is hope. And you have given us hope in the way that you have walked with us, you've listened to us, you have made programs available, like Victor translating here tonight. You've created signage for our community to be one community, dándonos siempre la bienvenido. And I know that we are walking on this journey together in Hackman Bay. It's been a really long year. I want to commend our essential workers, our farmworkers, all of those that have helped to maintain and keep us going through COVID. We've had a lot of, we've seen a lot of families struggle. We've seen a lot of individuals challenged through this emotionally and physically, but we've also seen that we are having been strong. And we are strong because of all of us together. Quiero decir a la comunidad latina que estoy muy orgullosa de todo lo que ustedes contribuyen cada año, cada día, cada hora. Ustedes cuando miramos sus sonrisas, cuando miramos a ustedes en el trabajo y vemos todo el trabajo duro que están haciendo, nos da orgullo. Y quiero felicitarlos porque este mes de la hispanidad quiero reconocer que ustedes son los ejemplos, los líderes, los mejores líderes de que podemos tener en este pueblo de Hackman Bay, y son el fábrica de nuestro pueblo. And I just want to say that I'm just so proud and honored at the hard work ethic that our Latino community has in Hackman Bay. Many of them stories of immigration here and the drive that they have to provide for their children, to work hard, to build our homes, to put food on our table, to work in our restaurants, to be the backbone of our economy, to be our first-gen college students, to be graduates, to be doctors, to be lawyers. And I know that we're going to continue on a path forward because ALAS is here presente. We have an amazing staff that works with all of all of the community. And because we have all of you, so Julissa, I want to say thank you personally for being a witness as a Latina and being able to give the proclamation, be on city staff, translate, and sabes que te queremos mucho. So and a very special shout out to Matthew, because years ago, Matthew said, I want to walk with you all. I'm going to be there. And then, you know, along the way, we we've had all of you join in different ways. I have already been present, city council, of course, Deborah, Debbie, Harvey, Robert, you know, and I know, who am I missing? Wakid! That is now our first Latino city council member, which is amazing. And, you know, just so many of you, and I I wish I could name everyone on the list. But I also see Chief Saul Lopez, and as a Latino, too, I want to congratulate you for being, you know, part of our community, leading us forward, and we're all working together to make this a better place. So thank you, everyone. I know that was a long speech, but I really believe that. Bob, thank you, you know, for this. And somos uno, somos, estamos juntos. And we're all one community, and I know this has been the dream for a long time. So I want to say thanks to all of you.
Thank you, Julissa, for presenting that wonderful proclamation. And thank you, Belinda, and to everyone who works with ALAS, for all the community service that you provide, not just to the Latinx community, but really to the whole community. So all your efforts are greatly appreciated and enriching Hackman Bay. Our next, next on the agenda, we have the mayor's announcements. I will ask Catherine if there's any report out from closed session meetings. I don't believe there is this week, but.
No report out that council is not vetted in closed sessions at this last meeting.
Okay. So now it's time for city manager updates to council, and we will start with a brief presentation from Jill Ikas regarding.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'll I'll start.
You start. Great. Thanks, Bob.
And first, I just want to make the comment that Chief Lopez is here. He informed me his camera is not working this evening, but he is here. He's listening, and he is able to participate and answer questions if anything comes up for him. So as mentioned earlier, there's two announcements on CM updates that we'll get to in a moment. They're very short. But as you mentioned, Mayor, we could make some some brief comments based on the comments we heard during public forum. And we we heard similar comments two weeks ago, maybe it was three weeks ago. I think twenty to twenty-five speakers spoke. Almost all of them were about housing insecurity and the lack of affordable housing. We heard various stories, and then I think there were ten more, ten speakers tonight. So we we did have a chance to think about it a little bit. And so this was, this did not catch us off guard. So as you mentioned earlier, we could make a few comments tonight, and then maybe that leads to something more. So I'll I'll turn it over to Ms. Ikas from Community Development in a second. But yes, that would be our suggestion, I think, if we jump right to the conclusion, is that this probably is worth a deeper dive. It's not scheduled on the agenda tonight. But if the council so desires, if I see head nods, if if I get that direction, I think this is something that, you know, will take a little more time, and we should actually put on the agenda for some, you know, a discussion session, a study session, call it what you want. I would think sometime in November would probably be appropriate. Again, I'll wait for your direction on that. The meetings are starting to get full as we look ahead towards the end of the year. But I think we could do it at one of the November meetings. Or if if you wanted to schedule a special meeting, you could always do that as well. So that's kind of the the conclusion of our comments is that this will, I think, require a a deeper dive, and we're happy to do that. Before I introduce Jill, I just want to make a couple of comments, and they kind of feed off some of the comments I heard tonight, at least two of them. And I'll start with Ayesha Barrow's comment. She always makes astute comments when she speaks before your council. And tonight, she made a very interesting comment, I thought, when she she kind of compared this challenge, this very vexing challenge of providing housing to another challenge that we're working on, policing and police reform. And she made the comment that with policing, it's very challenging because we had, we have challenges defining the problem. We can't really jump to solutions until we know what the problem is. And then we can think about what we need to do to solve that problem. And and she made the comment here, we know what the problem is. We have a lack of housing. So we don't need to focus on the problem. We need to focus on solutions. And and I agree with her. So that makes this one easier, I would say, in that the problem is better defined. And if we do have a study session, if that's what your council wants, I think there will be an opportunity to take it, take that deeper dive and really start to talk about the solutions. I think the challenge, though, and the reason this has gone on so for so many years, it's much bigger than us. It's bigger than the Bay Area. It's a it's a state problem. It's a national problem. It 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 comes down to, well, partly the causes of the problem, which is another subject. But also, I think, the roles that each different party bring to the solutions. And so the other comment I want to focus on with Joanne Ropkowski, she was the first speaker, and she made some various new comments as well. And she actually, she gave kind of a laundry list of examples of what she thought potential solutions might be. And I dotted down a couple of them. She mentioned, for example, changing zoning. She mentioned providing incentives. She mentioned something about regulation. I I didn't probably hear them all. But I thought she made a really good point because she really got to, I think, or acknowledged what governments can do, what our role should be, and also what what our role maybe shouldn't be, or what it's harder for us to do. And I would summarize by saying that, you know, our role, as I see it, is is being a facilitator and an incentivizer. She herself, when she made her comments, made comments that maybe we should provide incentives, and I agree with her. And to be a facilitator and to be an incentivizer, some of the, some of the things that Jill's going to talk about, we we've already done. It starts with our local postal plan. It does start with zoning. By having a plan that's well thought out, and one we just approved, and having the zoning that backs that up, the community, the city makes the decision about housing types, where we want housing, how big housing should be. Should we have condos, apartments, mobile homes, mansions, small houses, et cetera? And that really gets to then the beginning of making different types of housing affordable. The other way we can facilitate, and she mentioned it, is we should certainly make it easy for people to build affordable housing. There are lots of rules and regulations surrounding production of housing, and we certainly want to embrace developers and others who want to promote affordable housing as part of their project. And then as an incentivizer, I completely agree with this. This is our role. To some degree, we have the ability to have both a carrot and a stick. We provide the stick in that in our zoning, we require developers who are building market housing to also provide affordable units. And we also provide a carrot in that we allow more development if if they're willing to provide more affordable housing. So there is that incentive to do it. And and that, again, is part of our role. The part that's really challenging is producing housing. So we facilitate, we incentivize. And and I think to some degree, we've we've done a lot, and Jill will get into that. Our our, our doors are open for business, I would say, right now with the new local postal plan recently approved and certified. Production is obviously the hard part. And for the most part, of course, the production of housing is not provided by governments. It's it's probably over ninety percent. It's provided by the private sector. There is a role for us, and that's the, that's the part I think we need to take a deeper dive in. What can we do to be a partner in the production of housing? Because we can't do it alone. Governments do not produce housing, and they certainly probably don't do it well. But we can be a partner to nonprofits, to the private sector, and to where the money comes from in in in, and again, facilitating a public, quasi-public, I would say, project, which is what we've heard a lot about from these speakers. So with that, again, we're a facilitator. We're an incentivizer. Production's tricky, but we do have a role, and that's really where we need to focus our discussion at some point. I will turn it over to Jill to go a little deeper, and maybe she can give a taste of what what is, what the outline of a study session might be if we can be, if you, if the council would like us to to schedule something later this week. uh later this year. Jill?
Thank you, Bob. Good evening, council, uh members of the community, and um I'm Jill Ikas. I'm happy to be here tonight. I really took a lot of notes um at the last meeting, as well as tonight, from all of the really thoughtful speakers. Uh Veronica is uh gonna click slides for, for me here. Veronica, go ahead and thank you. I'm gonna get right into a few things that the city has been working on, because I think it's important. Um, this, this is tough, and it, it really, it's hard to connect the work that's been done with the depth of the need, and believe me, staff really feels it, and we we're incredibly concerned about it. We work on housing every day, every single day, and we are making progress. So hopefully, this brief overview tonight will give you some hope, and maybe also um help us set up for a study session in the future where I, I think we can share a lot more depth in terms of programming and some of the projects that may be coming through. I'm gonna focus on housing production, um but also make a few references to supporting our households that are um needing some support at this time. So as the city manager um identified of the city's primary role for facilitating housing, we, we usually call it setting the table. Uh, setting the table for affordable housing has been done in a big way with the land use plan update. And I know council already knows all of these bullet points on this slide. But there's a few here that are worth repeating, especially um for the speakers um who, who were here tonight and, and others who may be watching. Uh, the land use plan certified by the coastal commission in April of this year, um without having any revisions was an incredible accomplishment. And um most, most local coastal programs sit with the coastal commission for quite a long time before they're certified. So we're able to use it now. And what's fabulous about that is council in uh approving this plan, set up, up zonings in our town center that are really thoughtful, compatible with neighborhoods, but put housing in um a good place where services are available um with walking um to, to services, walking to parks, walking to schools, and um on lands that have capacity for more housing units and have infrastructure available to them. The other thing that is included in this plan is um a bit unusual. It's, it's really special for Hafman Bay's land use plan. It is the workforce housing overlay. This is not the typical, let's put a little more density in our downtown kind of idea. That's, that's what town center is, and that's pretty standard. The workforce housing overlay is a a strategy that is allowing housing to be built on land where housing cannot be built um at all right now, for the most part, or only in very limited numbers. And the housing that can be built on these properties now must be affordable. It has to be affordable. It cannot be um at the moderate or the market rate level for the workforce housing overlay. And this applies to um lands in agricultural use, our public schools, a couple of our larger church sites, a few uh city properties, and uh state parks, which is um not really the focus of it, but predominantly to agricultural lands and schools. It has the capacity for about three hundred units, and um we're I, I'll talk to you a little bit later in a couple more slides about uh the fruit uh that may be coming from that um soon. This last bullet point here is one that we, we need to be very mindful of as well. This land use plan update established affordable housing as a local priority land use for the city of Hafman Bay. And this is now, because it was certified by the coastal commission, is supported by them as well, which establishes the review of affordable housing as having less layers of pushback through this, the sensitive coastal zone um planning environment. It's really, really important. Um, it's important for policy, it's important for process, and then from, from the money side of things, it's incredibly important for water connections. This has been perhaps the most important thing that I've worked on, which is um reestablishing water connections for affordable housing to be available from the water district for about sixteen thousand dollars instead of an unknown um process and um ability to really secure a good price in a secondary market where we're hearing that these connections out there are from eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. No affordable housing can get built if water connections cost eighty thousand dollars or more. And that's why you haven't seen any for the last few years, because those water connections were not available. So we just, we just have to remind ourselves that setting the table really mattered here. It was a big deal. It was hard work. It took several years, and it's done. Uh, next slide, please. So recently, council has also been working on uh some associated um kinds of supportive things. Uh, the rental security measures were passed um almost two years ago. Uh, the Affordable Housing Fund guidelines were set up about two years ago, and, and dispersments have been made. Two hundred thousand dollars recently was um put forth to uh Saint Vincent de Paul and Coastside Hope to support um rent, um rent support for low-income households who were, who've been struggling recently. So that is a an eligible, appropriate use of that fund, and council-approved uses of those funds, and hopefully some of the speakers um were supported by those funds. Um, and then, of course, city council supported Coast House, which was um the purchase by San Mateo County using CARES funding of the uh Coastside Inn on Highway One. And um now we have a shelter being operated by Life Moves and an MOU with the city where we're we're working with the county and learning more and more about what will best support the city's homeless population. We would expect um Coast House to change over time, and to um the fifty-two hotel rooms that it is now may, may end up um housing families at some point. Maybe they'll be reconfigured. So there's, there's lots of opportunities there now that that property has been purchased and is being, um it's owned by a public agency that supports this use and has an excellent tried and true operator with Life Moves. Um, next slide, please. Uh, also currently, um with regards, uh there's always more work to do on policies and codes. Uh, we have three under, underwear recently completed. Um, the, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance um was wrapped up with city council uh in August, and we are submitting it to the coastal commission for their certification. ADUs aren't the answer, but it is part of the, part of the um solution to produce more housing units. We know it isn't the only one. Um, but ADUs can be used in a lot of different ways, and maybe, maybe there's an incentive tool associated with them. So there's, there's more thinking to be done. But now having your ordinance coming through, it will be um much easier for us to work with ADUs. Um, the short-term rental ordinance is before you tonight, so I'm not going to talk about it um right now, because it's on another part of your agenda. But it matters relative to housing stock preservation. And then um back up to the housing element. Uh, we are working on um cycle six housing element. I've spoken about this um quite a few times recently. We've already had some public meetings about it. Some of your speakers tonight talked about um challenges with uh getting, getting um rental properties and that they're really struggling in, in working through those negotiations. That's, that's something that is often addressed in housing element policy. In fact, it, it already is in our policy, so I'm very interested in what's going on with that. And uh we have resources that can, can help with those kinds of circumstances. It might not be a city resource, it could be a county resource. Uh, but there, there are ways that we can um be helpful there. Um, we also heard speakers talk about wanting to get involved in a conversation about um uh helping to think through some creative ideas for um what kind of housing, or how to use it, or how to incentivize it. And the housing element, once again, is going to be a great place for those forums. I know um Brittany Cazolino, who's our assistant planner, she's our associate planner. She's working on the housing element. She's listening in tonight. She's very interested in uh the comments from the speakers, and uh she and I are working really hard on, on that element. We ha- we aren't ready for those um meetings yet, but they'll, they'll be coming soon. So do know um still from policies and codes, we, we have a lot going on. Um, next slide. Uh, this is the most fun part to share with you tonight. Um, in terms of facility, facilitating housing production, we're starting to get applications or pending applications based on the adoption of the land use plan. And so we do have um some applications right now for Measure D certificates, and you're gonna see that at your next meeting for transfers. And they include uh some affordable units, including uh some units within the town center area. Uh, these units happen to not be within the um defined downtown area, but they're in, they're in our town center area, so they need transfers. So we're looking forward to um presenting that to you in a couple of weeks and uh getting your feedback about that. And then moreover, with regards to applications, we actually have a preliminary application in hand for up to seven units of uh farmworker housing on an agricultural property at the south end of town that was enabled by the land use plan. And there's another one uh pending on another property in town, also on an agricultural use. Um, and between the two of them, they have the capacity for um probably in the short term up to about ten units and, and more in the long term. Staff has been working with San Mateo County Department of Housing um for several years now with respect to a farmworker housing loan program. And um it's kind of been a matchmaking process where we are um trying to make sure that that program is available in the city limits. They've never used it in town before. And we are breaking the ice. We're going to, um, we believe, have eligible projects within the city for um mobile homes, for uh farmworkers at uh very low and extremely low income levels, and uh that they would be subsidized um for development through that loan program. It's a big deal because mobile homes help us with a quicker build, and we will keep you posted about how that's going. I'm also uh continuing to um work on bringing in a housing consultant. We worked with one in the past. And um we were not able to continue on that relationship. Um, that consultant has moved on to um do some other things, but um we have somebody um who's excellent, and I'm hoping to bring them forward soon. I've, I've been um pursuing this through multiple firms, and um as Bob said, a um study session possibly in November would be hopefully good timing. I'd really like to have that consultant on board, and we could I give you a quite a bit more depth with respect to um housing policy and programs um beyond what uh we're presenting tonight in terms of land use and um housing production. And I think I have one more slide. So next steps, um, we want to come back and talk more. We are working on, on development proposals. I've only skirted over them tonight. There are many more pending. Uh, some are in downtown, some are outside of downtown. Uh, there are a range of housing types included in these proposals, and once we have applications on the counter, we can share this with you, and we're eager to do so. Uh, we also continue to look at opportunity sites for housing, uh whether they're owned by um private developers. We, of course, have looked at city-owned properties and really struggled because our, our land holdings are um limited and often um have, have constraints. And, and that's pretty common in, in the coastal zone. Again, the housing element, you're gonna see uh more and more activity on that. I would like in a study session to talk with council about the use of the housing fund and the status of it, and some more options for you, because it is available to you, and it is your discretion. We do have someone who's seeking some funds, so we'll be bringing that request to you um when, when it's ready. And um that's, that's kind of the overview tonight. Um, we would love to talk about it more, and we'll be ready to do so uh soon. I'm, I'm very hopeful about housing production, and I want to share that with you in the community. Thank you.
You so much, Jill. And as Bob said um earlier, this is not an agendized item, but we did want to provide the public with an update to give folks things to think about when we do fully agendize this uh and go into a deep dive. So um I didn't want to have too much conversation on this. Uh, council member Ruddick, yeah, brief comments, and then we'll continue on.
Yeah, I just um want to remind folks about hip housing, you know, which is home share. You know, if you have an extra bedroom and you want to make a little income, um hip housing will match you up with some. So you don't have to wait till a housing developer just builds. If you have room and want to, they can find you someone to, to share your home. So I, I would not overlook that as an opportunity. So if we have a study session, I think we should, you know, bring that back. We have had um presentations by them about how it works. You know, we could have another. We should every year, actually. And, and the city really might want to link to hip housing on our own website, because they, they produce, you know, some reports on a, I think it's either a weekly or monthly basis about um new opportunities. So I think that's important. And I don't think we mentioned our inclusionary housing ordinance. So uh we do have an ordinance that requires with, with subdivisions, that a certain amount be set aside for below-market rate housing. And uh we first created that ordinance back in the nineties, and uh I want to take a little credit for that. That was my big project. So I know some folks might think we've never done anything about housing. I actually have a long history in um related to housing in Hafman Bay. So, and I know that my fellow council members, each one has worked hard the last several years in trying to churn up opportunities. Um, opportunities that presented themselves were often churned down by the people who could make them, including churches and nonprofits. So it's not for lack of trial. And I think a lot of, you know, what's realistic will, will come out in this, this work session. So I, I appreciate the city manager's remarks about a facilitative role and a coordinating role. Ultimately, um developers gotta have a project that pencils out. And one of the things I've noticed is that you know, we don't ask enough of developers. You know, they can get a, a map for a subdivision and get approvals, and then oftentimes, they just turn around and flip that property with the approvals to somebody else, who then comes back and wants relief for conditions on approvals, so that they can turn it around and they can make their profit. So they can update, they can renew their subdivision maps many times, up to ten years, I believe it is. So they can get permits, and we can spend money, and we can go through long processes, and get the public worked up. The developer can just turn around and slip it for profit. So I think that's a piece that needs to be fixed as well. You know, we're not asking enough of developers. We just allow them to do their, their profit-making thing, ask nothing in return. So that's an area where I think the state should focus and our legislative committee, you know, might play a role. So that's all I have to say.
Very much, Councilmember Ruddick. And Jill, yeah, hang on, just one second. Uh, Jill, if you wouldn't mind, just before I forget, would you mind sending the, this particular PowerPoint presentation to all council members? I think we'd all like to have this. And also um And also, I think it would be nice to post this somewhere on our city council website. So the public can also have a sense of what we're doing, but also to have them thinking about, you know, preparing for the November meeting. And I really look forward to the consultant that you're bringing on. And someone who will be very savvy and aware of some of the things that council member Ruttick has brought up. Because development can be a very enlightening and also disappointing endeavor. All the nuance. So, so that's great. I really appreciate all the work you put into this. You and staff put, put into putting this together. So thank you again, Bob.
Yeah, quickly, Tom. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't see any council member heads going this way on the idea of a deeper dive in November. So we'll take that as the affirmative to try to get, get it on our agenda. And then I also, I just wanted to comment on council member Ruttick's promotion of hip housing. Councilmember Rarbeck brought that up to me earlier today too. And he thought it was a great idea to make sure we got promotion out for hip housing. So I wanted to plug that. Both Jill and Matthew, we're going to actually weave that into the presentation later on short-term rentals. They don't need to do that now, but if they want to, they can promote hip housing again when we get to that. Jill or Matthew, do you have anything to add to the comments made by council member Ruttick on, on hip housing? Or are we all in agreement with council member Ruttick and council member Rarbeck that they're, they're a great program? And we just need to help promote them a little bit more.
I definitely agree. And, and to her point, I get, I think it's a bi-weekly list of house, home share opportunities and people looking for home share opportunities. I will say that I don't often see coast side opportunities on that list. And so we definitely do need to promote it more. But to council member Ruttick's point, I think we will find a place on our website to either post that or we'll probably just link to it on the hip website so that we're not duplicating efforts there. But I, I think we can do more to promote this great service and, and get the word out so that property owners know it's available.
Jessica, if you could take note, put that on our, on the weekly newsletter as well. And just put it on there every week for the time being, you know, just to get it promoted out there would be great. Short notice, council member Penrose.
Yes. Thank you, Jill, for an update on all the work that you and staff have been doing over the years, the last several years on our local coastal plan, especially in view of housing. Your being able to get us affordable water connections is going to be a make it or break it for being able to build low income housing. And thank God you were able to do that. It's, it's, it's the best. I would just like to say that I think that this topic is such a huge one. And so very, very complicated and so many different things to be talked about. But I would like to see us not have it on the regular agenda at, at a regular meeting, but to hold a special meeting for it.
We'll take that under consideration as well. Thank you, Councilmember Penrose. Appreciate that. Okay. With that, I'd like to move on to the consent calendar. In fact, I will make the motion so you can just kind of move along. Is there anything that needs to be pulled?
We missed a couple of city council.
Oh, you're right. Two announcements. Thank you. Thank you.
No worries. I will take that cue. But I promise they're going to be fast. We have a couple of updates in sustainability and public works. First, I wanted to draw everyone's attention to next Saturday will be coastal cleanup day. So from nine AM to 12 PM, we have stations at three of our beaches, Dunes Beach, Poplar Beach and Roosevelt Beach. And I want to give a big shout out to the nonprofits that are acting as site captains for each of those beaches next Saturday. So thank you so much to all of those volunteers for dedicating your Saturday morning to cleaning up our beaches. We have the Rotary Club Surf Rider and Sea Hooker. So thank you to, again, all of those volunteers. If you are interested, you as council or members of the public are interested in participating, please do sign up. I have a link listed here on the slide, but I also have a link on our website. This way we can get a good idea of how many people to expect, to make sure that we have all the supplies and parking passes for everybody as well. So should be fun to get outside and clean up our beaches. So please, if you, we hope to see you there. And I also wanted to mention that at the next city council meeting on December 21st, we'll be holding a building electrification study session. We've done a lot of community feedback and at the study session, we will review what we've heard from the community and also talk about next steps. So if you're interested in learning more about the ordinance and what we've done so far, as well as look at some recordings for some meetings that we've had, you can find all of that at hmbcity.com/electrification. And again, I hope that we have a lot of members of the public at our study session. Next time, we hope to have a really good conversation. So unless there's any questions about building electrification study session or coastal cleanup day, I will pass it along to John for one last update.
Veronica. Are you aware that Peninsula Clean Energy just passed a financing program to finance building electrification for existing buildings?
Yes, they do have a on-bill financing program that should launch in January of next year. And I have that listed in the staff report and planned on talking about it a little bit at the study session. But thank you for bringing it up. It's really exciting.
It is. Thank you.
For mentioning that, Councilmember Rarbeck. Thank you. And thank you for Veronica.
So John, I think you have the last slide here.
There we go. Thank you. I am pleased to just let you know that last meeting you approved the contract with happen bay paving and grading. We have been working diligently to make the Poplar pedestrian pathway project happen. And we are going to be starting work and mobilization out next Monday, the 13th. So we just wanted to let you and the community know to expect to see that. As we've indicated here and other places and on signage that's been now located out at the site, where our intention is to maintain access both for the automobiles, getting to the parking lot and, and back, and also pedestrian access throughout the construction time. We ask that people please be, be aware of the activities going on, be safe. We're going to try to make it as safe as possible out there, but they need to be vigilant as well in helping us be safe, whether they're in their car, riding their bike or walking along there. But we're excited for this project to happen. And thank you, council, for your support, your funding and commitment to this. And thank you, community, for your willingness to put up with a little bit of pain and suffering over the next few weeks in order for a greatly improved experience on the pathway as well as the speed tables on that portion of Poplar next to the pathway. So two, I think, improved situations for, for, for all the community in the neighborhood out there. So thank you.
Thank you, John. And it'll be a great improvement for both our local residents as well as our visitors. And I think everyone will really appreciate how beautiful that path will be when we finish meeting it. So thank you.
Well, all the, I was going to say, all the credit goes to other people in my office, not me. But I just happened to be the lucky one here tonight to get the, to get your, to get your.
Well, John, thank you to all those who are doing the real work in your group there. I appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Paul's and Jonathan behind the scenes and Jill's crew, Brittany and Jill. It's a cast of thousands around there, but they all got us to this point in a timely manner. And I'm greatly appreciative for their efforts and work.
Great. Well, thank you to everyone. I know we've all been waiting to see this start. So terrific. All right. Now with confidence, I could say we are moving on to the consent calendar. Thanks for pulling me back there. And yeah, I'll read these out quickly so we can save some time, move things along. There's nothing to be pulled from council members, correct? No items? I think there were, right? Just double checking. Okay. So I move that we adopt the following items in the consent calendar. Item 1A, wave reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item 1B, amend the Hafman Bay municipal code to increase council member salaries from existing $735 to $950 a month effective January 1st, 2023. Item 1C, approval of a letter regarding the proposed permanent closure of the Mack E. Mickelson therapeutic pool. Item 1D, receipt of legislative position paper for Senate Bill 591. Item 1E, acceptance of the orders report from the fiscal year 2019 through 2020 audit. Item 1F, by motion, accept the treasurer's report for the quarter ending June 30th, 2021. Item 1G, adopt a resolution authorizing, authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the city's City Hall Annex Lease Agreement for 507B Parisma Street, Hafman Bay. Adopt a revolution, resolution organizing agreement to amendment number two, sorry, to agree with Nichols Consulting Engineers for Professional Services for the Poplar Beach Gateways Plan. Item 1I, to accept the quarterly financial report for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 202021. And that's it. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarbeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ruttick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And we will now take a short 10-minute break until 8:52. And when we resume, we'll take up ordinances and public hearings, beginning with item 82A, short-term vacation rental and home occupation ordinance. Thank you very much. Agendized item, ordinances and public hearing. And we'll conduct a public hearing on short-term vacation rental and home occupation ordinance. For those members of the public who may be just joining us for the first time, we, this way this works is we will first have a staff report. Council will then ask any clarifying questions after the staff report. We will then open up the session for comments from the public. And once again, people will be able to raise their hands and make their comments. And then after their, after a public comment, council will then have deliberations among themselves. Okay, so let's begin with our staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mayor Brownstone, City Council. I am here tonight to give a brief presentation on the short-term rental ordinance. I'm just going to get ready to share my screen. Can I just confirm that you can see the presentation?
Yep, looks great.
Great, thank you. All right. The item before you tonight is the short-term vacation rental and home occupation ordinance. This is a, an item that was continued from your August 17th meeting. So this is a first reading and it is a public hearing. And we're going to focus tonight on just making sure you know that background is available if you want it. But I'm going to skim over that. The focus is going to be on changes that were made to the draft ordinance based on your August 17th input, next steps, and then your public hearing as Mayor Brownstone described. On, in brief, short-term rentals and home occupations are currently allowed in the city. The intent is that they would continue to be allowed. But with, in the case of short-term rentals, new zoning provisions, basically land use regulations and for home occupations, a modest update to the zoning regulations that are currently on the book. Last meeting, we reviewed the activity level of Happy Moon Bay short-term vacation rentals. And in your staff report for this evening, we added some more information about hotel room rates. That was in your staff report. And there's also an attachment to the report with some short-term rental rates, just to fill out some more data. There was, there seemed to be interest in that. And this presentation will be heavily weighed on short-term rentals, not home occupations, because that was really the focus of your, of your discussions and your changes. And we also note that the Coastal Commission is very interested in short-term vacation rentals. They support coastal access. At the same time, the Coastal Commission does acknowledge local discretion is appropriate and has certified policies in the local coastal land use plan update in April. This is the part of the presentation. This is the part of the presentation where I was going to give a little plug to hip housing because policy 2-7, housing stock preservation is one of those policies that it's really broad and from the perspective of folks who have homes with room in them where they have room for a, a short-term rental. They also may have room for home sharing. Clearly, there are some folks who, who would choose to not do that. We heard from one tonight. But there are others who would, and also I have to come back and note that hip housing is on our website. Will make it more prominent. So just, just a little note there. But you also have, in addition to housing stock preservation policies, a policy for home occupation, a policy about short-term rentals, and then numerous policies that were listed in your staff report related to infrastructure capacity, neighborhood preservation, and coastal access. So these are the top three, but there, there are many others that should provide some guidance for your thinking about this particular ordinance. We reviewed the history of preparing this draft ordinance. Of course, the most recent outing for this was a notice public hearing before your council on August 17th, and here we are with the continuance to a date certain. So council's discussion a few weeks ago, we, we kind of characterized it under three different categories. The firm priority for housing stock preservation really being a concern that housing units, if a short-term rental ordinance was too permissive, housing units could shift into that use and might no longer be used for housing as shelters was, was a term that was used in your discussion. And that has happened. It certainly happened in other jurisdictions, and we, we are aware of some cases of that happening here. Interest in neighborhood compatibility, you certainly heard from some members of the public who were concerned about how operations are affecting them in a neighborhood environment. We also heard from some operators who had some great suggestions and have really good track records for, for how they're running their short-term rentals. And then infrastructure capacity. I only have two slides, but we're just going to, on, on these things, we're going to focus on the changes in your ordinance on attachment one to the staff report is a clean copy of what we're proposing tonight as your ordinance. Attachment two shows the changes since August 17th in a strike-through underline format, so you should, hopefully, we're able to drill down on those and find what you were looking for. But if you have questions after this presentation about anything that was in, in the coding language or not, we're happy to field those. With regards to housing stock preservation and neighborhood compatibility, this ordinance has been based on a primary residence requirement that is brought forward from your August meeting, but we did add a caveat about that because we, we saw an opportunity to, to make that really clear. If, if the operator is renting the property and wishes to provide a short-term rental, we want to make sure that we have a real primary resident who's, who's living on this property has demonstrated through a longer lease. And so there's a modification in the suggested code to address that. Specifically from the council direction, you asked us to bring forward a limitation on the number of nights for unhosted, or what is sometimes referred to as whole-house rentals. And we started with 60 based on your direction, and we also added a provision for renewals which would require proof of rental nights. They would need to have documentation about that, and we would, of course, also have, have some level of monitoring of that, although it's really hard to get that information from hosting platforms. So this required some definitions to be added to the language. We, so you'll see in the code now, there is a definition for unhosted as well as for hosted. And with respect to hosted short-term rentals, these are the ones where the operator who may be the property owner or the long-term tenant is living in the house and is hosting the, those folks for accommodations that are visitors. And in this case, the, the feedback was if the, if it's really hosted and we require the primary resident to be the operator. If there is a responsible party, shouldn't it be the primary resident and shouldn't that person be the host? So there's, there's a lot of terms here, but they all matter for how this ordinance gets enacted. So this, this essentially, this change would make it so that the host really needs to be on the property while, while the short-term rental is being hosted. There isn't a limit on the number of annual nights per year for hosted short-term rentals as proposed in this ordinance. We've not seen that type of short-term rental limited in other jurisdictions' codes. We haven't seen that in the coastal zone. Most cities allow them on an unlimited basis if they are hosted, but we, we do understand your concern about ways for that to not result in having a housing unit being used for housing. So that, that is the purpose of, of adding this. And this was, this was the city manager's suggestion, and we, we did some work with it, and we think it's a good, strong provision. And the next set of changes really relate to infrastructure capacity. Council discussed maximum occupancy. We brought to you a suggestion in the previous draft of, of two persons per bedroom with a maximum of eight and then not counting children ages 12 and younger. We're bringing this back based on your input that obviously children ages 12 and younger also use water and energy and create trash and make noise and contribute to the intensity of use of the property and the infrastructure, and so we really need to count them. So we brought that, this back as two per bedroom with a maximum of eight. And also a caveat about hosted short-term rentals where, you know, the host bedroom can't count towards the occupancy of a hosted SDR. So we can talk about configurations of how this might work if you're interested. We, we ran a kind of the corner cases on it, and we, we think this is pretty solid. We like, we like how it works for typical house sizes in Half Moon Bay, and I think it's quite reasonable. Water came up, water consumption came up in, in the discussion, and I have a lot of water data, and so I spent time, I've, I've already done this previously for the planning commission, but I spent more time on it. I looked at many of our operating short-term rentals to see how within the bounds of typical water use for a single-family home, they were, or if they were quite a bit over. Some of them were quite a bit over, and that's why the planning commission had a water monitoring provision added to the ordinance. But we also noticed that we have operators who are on private wells as well as one that's on septic. And we would suggest, and this was a staff-generated change, this didn't specifically come up in your discussion, but you inspired it, the research. We would suggest that we require mini services on, and in the event that mini services such as a CCWD water connection or a connection to the sanitary sewer district. If they're not available, then the operator would need to demonstrate that there's adequate capacity, that the, the well has safe yield for higher occupancy, that the septic system has adequate capacity for having more tenants in a house. Often, a septic system is designed to a bedroom count and assumed occupancy. So if that surprised you, I just wanted to share where that came from. And, and then finally, again, thinking about infrastructure capacity and especially in our neighborhoods where we tend to have more non-conforming lots in terms of their size, they're, they're smaller than the minimum lot size for the neighborhood. And being concerned about potential future subdivision and compounding impacts of short-term rental infrastructure use, we are suggesting minimum lot sizes relative to different zoning districts. And those were described in your staff report. They're quickly listed here. The PUD zone would predominantly relate to Ocean Colony and the Nautu Chi PUDs, and then PUDX is Pacific Ridge. The lot sizes were selected for specific reasons, and we're happy to hear feedback about that. Almost done here. Just reminding everyone, we do also have a modest update to the home occupation ordinance. It is consistent with the land use plan. It intends to support business and economic development and maintain compatibility with neighborhoods. Public notice, we reviewed this in a bit of detail last time, but I do want to note that in addition to your continuance of this item to a date certain, Joe made sure to also renotice everyone who is a previous or a current operator through email. That is not required, but he, he did that just to make sure in case they, they missed the first hearing. Should this move forward, a next step, of course, would be a second reading, and then we would make an application to the California Coastal Commission. If it does not move forward tonight, we'll, we'll talk about that through your deliberation and plot out a next step. And again, this is so nice, as the mayor reviewed upon starting out this item. This is exactly the format. We're here to answer, just clarifying questions at this point, things that aren't, weren't made clear in this presentation or the staff report. Allow plenty of time for your public hearing and for your deliberation, and then our recommended motion is moving forward the draft ordinance, which we hope satisfies your direction to us from the last meeting. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, for that great presentation and the additional pieces you added to it, in addition to what we spoke about in our last session. Are there any clarifying questions from council members at this point before we have public comments? I see no hands. Okay, so I am now officially opening the public comment portion. If anyone has a public comment, let's just take a minute, and can you please raise your hand? You're a participant. You can see your name there and click and raise your hand. See how many? I'm just going to wait another minute. Do we have any other members of the public would like to comment? Please raise your hand now. Let's set the clock for three minutes.
Okay, our first speaker is Alan Seane. Alan, you have three minutes.
Welcome back, Alan. Came at the right time.
Hi, I'm, I'm just getting out of the car. Can you come back to me next?
Yeah.
Sure, that's fine. Ray Olson, you have three minutes.
Wow, that was quick. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you fine. Thanks, Ray.
I'm glad you're not viewing me because I'm in my pajamas right now.
Ray, as long as you're comfortable, got the floor.
All right. Please don't time me.
We're timing you, Ray.
The pressure's on. Okay, here we go. I reviewed the updated language of the SDR ordinance, and would like to thank you for making some changes that the residents have requested in our last city council meeting. However, I think the current language is falling short of what was originally requested. And so I would like you to consider some changes. Changes will offer the security and preservation of my family, the community here that we all are a part of. First, the residents is requested to have the primary owner actually staying on-site in the property while guests are visiting. What is meant is that there are no unhosted days. If the city is requiring that the property must be the primary residence of the property owner, then one would assume that the owner must be living in the property the entire year. We are requesting that there is no unhosted days where a residential property can turn their home into a motel. And there are examples of the cities that have enacted similar ordinances. Please review the Santa Monica Short-Term Residence Ordinance. In addition, the current updated language does have a maximum days per year, but I'm confused why that is defined only for unhosted guest days. The residents are asking the council to change the language such that if we have a maximum number of days per year, that total is applied for both hosted and unhosted days. It is completely reasonable that a property owner can supplement their annual income with about $60,000 per year based on a limit of 60 days per year. And finally, I would like you to please consider the amount of rooms that can be rented out per day as this requirement can be easily abused. On average, a single-family home in Half Moon Bay has four bedrooms per home. And if we are requiring the homeowner to be present while the property is a motel, the number of rooms that should be allowed to be rented in one night should be three with two persons per room. That's completely reasonable. I'm thankful that you're limiting the amount of guests per night to eight, including children. And I'm thankful you're updating the language around the definition of what is hosted. However,
15 seconds, Ray.
Use the home in both a hosted and unhosted manner leaves a lot of ambiguity and difficulty in enforcing our ordinance. Having the language stipulate that only hosted rental days are allowed will make for manageable enforcement of the ordinance while at the same time serving all of the residents of Half Moon Bay and the homeowners. It's ironic that I'm bringing this up.
Ray, Ray, your time's up. I'm sorry, but thank you for your comments.
No, let me speak, please.
No, no, actually, Ray, your time is up. So thank you. Thank you, Ray. Sorry.
And next we have Mark Fizalotto. Mark, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Hello, I'm Mark Fizalotto. I'm speaking here for myself and my wife, Tracy Halliburton. We've lived in Half Moon Bay for the last 30 years and our current home for 25 years. We raised our kids here and have been actively involved in many aspects of the community. I'm speaking in response to statements made in the public comment section of the city council meeting on August 17. Our home is the SDR next door to Our home is the STR next door to Ray Olson. In that meeting, Ray presented information that was completely confined. We have since put together documents which detail all the activities that he referred to and precisely describes what actually happened, including audio and visual and video. This information defends our position that his statements were fabricated. We sent this information to Joe Butcher on 8/20, and he passed it on to the city council members on about 8/24. And I understood it should have been available on the agenda for this meeting, but somehow not included. Anyone listening to this meeting is welcome to call me or Joe to get the same information. I can be reached at 650-544-8308. During that meeting back in August, there was discussion following Ray's statements by both open-form speakers and city council members. That discussion assumed that Ray had stated facts. Based on Ray's story, the discussion then led to the council members sending the planning commission back to draw up much stricter STR restrictions than was previously planned. Specifically, 60 nights a year maximum and a maximum of eight overnight guests seems much too restrictive for a five-bedroom house on an oversized lot such as ours. We currently accept up to a total of 12 overnight people altogether, no kids included, which seems reasonable for the size of our property. The STR regulations should be made using factual information, so we are asking that the council members reconsider their strategy based on the facts. We believe that all current STR operators should be grandfathered in and able to operate as we have been. Once the ordinance is in effect, all STR operators should consistently be evaluated on their actual performance and community impact. The city can then apply the rules across all STR operators and shut down those who are on violation. We would also like to have rules in place for those who make false complaints or harass STR guests. There was a false complaint.
Yeah, 15 seconds, Mark, just so you know.
There was a false complaint and harassment at our property last month, which resulted in a $4,000 refund. We paid our guests. That penalty should have been gone to them by making false complaints. We believe that STRs have been successful on both sides of the equation. Homeowners are free to use their property in any way they choose, and the city ends up making money in the trans-occupancy tax. We've been and will continue to be responsible and respectful STR owners. Thank you for listening and considering our input.
Thank you for your input, Mark. Appreciate it. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Alan Sean. Alan, you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you, and I appreciate all the work that's been done trying to come up with something that makes sense for the city. I'd like to start off. One thing I think that is a false assumption that's underlying a lot of the rulemaking that's going on here is that this is going to increase the amount of housing that's available, that this is a real housing issue. I can assure you that if I stopped doing short-term rentals, I would not be renting my house out on a long-term basis. The attraction of a short-term rental is that it lets other people enjoy it. It lets you enjoy the property as well and brings income to the town. It's a win-win-win for everybody involved. I'd also point out that I think, you know, based on the numbers that have been presented in previous meetings, there's really a relatively small number of short-term rentals that are out there. So, you know, we're really talking about legislating an issue that doesn't even really exist yet in terms of, you know, overtaking the available housing in town. And there's a simple solution to that. I think, as the previous speaker mentioned, you can follow the Santa Cruz model and grandfather the existing operators under the ordinance. You know, why penalize people who have had years of a very positive track record of running their properties in a great and, you know, beneficial way for everybody? The primary residence requirement is another issue that I feel is not really connected to having a successful short-term rental. You know, whether I live there or the manager of the property lives there has nothing to do with being able to run it well, both for the people who are renting it and for the neighbors around. You know, I just think tying those two things together is really not the right way to go. And it doesn't, you know, result in, you know, having somebody that's gonna run the property better than somebody who is not, you know, not in residence. Also, the restriction on the number of nights. You're talking about a 60-night limitation. I'm not sure why there, you know, if you have somebody who's operating the property in a positive way, why do you need to restrict the nights? Of course, if people are making violations, noise, excess people, too many cars, parties, that obviously should be enforced, but that has nothing to do with the number of nights. Also, my last comment is the number of people in the house should be tied to the size of the house. Right? If I have a house with five bedrooms that sleeps 10 people, I don't understand why the occupancy should be limited to eight people. It doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Alan. Appreciate it.
And next, we have Sergey Savastuk.
Hi, do you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, oh, thank you. It's the first time I participate, and my wife is a short-term operator. I'm helping her with the business and the legal issues. And first time really listening to all these problems, and I'm really surprised that in the first half, you talked about the fact that the people don't make enough money. I can tell you that here to support our house for the short-term rentals, about five people are working. And what I'm gonna do next, I'm gonna start telling this Latina community that the city council members are going to be reducing their earnings because what's gonna happen, I'm gonna have, let's say, 60 days. So what is going to mean? They're gonna earn less. Who is going to earn less? The people who are cleaning the house, people who are making gardening, people who are making repairs. If the house is gonna have fewer renters, then people are gonna have less work to do. So that means the community, Latina community, is gonna suffer. And you're gonna be the ones, the city councils, who are gonna to make it happen. That's the first point, okay? The second point, about 10 years ago, so we've been doing short-term rentals for about 10 years. Ocean Colony had the noise issues, okay? And Ocean Colony grandfathered all short-term operators who did these short-term rentals at that time. We settled that under the threat of the lawsuit, okay? So what is unacceptable right now in the current ordinance? First, primary residence requirement, 60 days limit, lot limit. It's a joke, honestly saying, okay? So the suggestion is if you are excluding some of the territory of the Half Moon Bay, like downtown, from these requirements, you have to exclude Ocean Colony too. Otherwise, what's gonna be happening? We're going to appeal to the coastal commission and to file a lawsuit against the city of Half Moon Bay. If I remember correctly, it was about.
Sergey, yeah, 37.
Yeah, I know, I know. 2007, if you remember, you might remember, might be not, but the city lost a serious judgment, about $37 million to the developer. And I promise you, I'm gonna put as much money as I can to file a lawsuit and fight to the end and until your grandfather, Ocean Colony community, short-term rental operators. Thank you.
Sergey, next speaker, please.
Matthew Dayton, you have three minutes. Matthew, you're muted.
Matthew. Thank you. Sorry about that. We figured out the mute button by now. I feel like I'm a frequent speaker at these events, and I keep on coming back to how much time we're spending on this issue? There are about 45, based on your own records, rentals in Half Moon Bay, three of which I operate, three of which, one of is a, you know, they're all small units, none are primary houses, none. My friends operate, including, you know, people that are known on this council, they operate Airbnb short-term rentals too. None of them are primary houses. There's less than 1% of our housing stock or supposed housing stock taken up by this issue. Yet I've been on 10, if not 15, of these meetings with city council staff, Jill, Joe, countless hours, perhaps hundreds of thousands of dollars on this issue. Don't you think there's perhaps a better use of our time here versus regulating a few bad actors and trying to solve for something that is less than 1% of Half Moon Bay housing stock? It is insane what we're doing here. There are much bigger problems, folks, than a few short-term rental operators. You know, I would argue that time is better spent elsewhere. I have 712 reviews. I have 4.9 ratings on all my reviews. I'm listed in five or six top 10, you know, rentals in Half Moon Bay. You know, Ray has got perhaps some bone to pick with somebody, and there's a few others. We don't have a problem here, people. We don't. Not at 1%. Go, you know, so I'm sorry, I feel frustrated. And, you know, the city should be shocked at how much time we're spending on an issue that is less than 1% of housing stock. Let's find real solutions to affordable housing, not go after, you know, 45 rentals here in Half Moon Bay. Thank you.
Thanks, Matthew. Our next speaker is Stephanie. Stephanie, you have three minutes. Intermuted, Stephanie.
Can you hear me? Yes. Let's see. I don't agree with the ordinance. I don't agree with the ordinance. You know, for the past few weeks, I live at 213 Korea Street. And, you know, we've had to really, we've had some issues with some guests that have been staying there, to the point of recently, we've had to call the sheriffs because of some possible, you know, violence to my husband. So, you know, we've been experiencing this for the past three, two years, couple of years, maybe more. But at this last incident, it needs to be, at this point, I'm stressing that, you know, it being close to us, I have a 12-year-old girl that still lives here. It's not safe to have, you know, people that we don't know that are next to us, as well as, you know, the reason why we chose to live here is to raise a family and be in a really good, you know, community, which it is, but to not know who is next door. And after this last incident, it's kind of scary. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments, Stephanie. I believe that's our last speaker, correct?
Correct.
Great. Now we'll be closing our public comment session. And we can now begin council deliberations. If anyone would like to begin. Tiring, that's, yeah, sorry, sorry. unmuted there, all right? Council member, our back, please.
I don't have much to say. I really support the revised ordinance, and I'm grateful that staff actually listened to what we had to say. And those people who are objecting to the 60-day limit on unhosed days are not aware of the fact that we're skating on thin ice with the coastal commission. And they almost definitely would not approve an ordinance that did not allow any unhosed days. So I'm grateful to staff. I think this is a good ordinance, and I appreciate the fact that they listened to us when we had our contributions last meeting. So, thank you.
Council member, our back. I'm sorry, council member, I see your hand up next, or? No, okay, sorry. Council member amendments or council member, thoughts? Okay, oh, council member.
Let's see. First, I wanna address, you know, Stephanie's comment. I understand her comment. It's something actually I've been thinking about. If you remember when we first talked about opening up the shelter in the coast for homeless population. Some of the, some of the things that were asked, you know, from the public, it was about a background check, you know, that it was to do on our homeless population and anybody who will come into the shelter. And, you know, but then again, we talked about, well, we don't do background checks on anybody who checks into our hotels. So that's, that's something that, you know, that comes to mind. We want our community to be safe. We want our streets, you know, our children especially, to be safe from the visitors to our community, and I understand that. And I'm sure, you know, our chefs, you know, will be very attentive to that. About any violation of our laws in our community, you can always, you know, reach out, you know, on 911. If there is something you see at a short-term rental that you don't agree with or you see a violation of our law, then, you know, you can reach out to, you know, our deputies and maybe maintain a record of any of the, any of the activities that go on that could be affecting our community, the safety of our community. So that's it. The other one, you know, I just have to say this. Well, one of the, in the public comments, he was addressing the short-term rentals. I smiled because it was offensive. It was offensive to our essential workers. We have been struggling in Half Moon Bay, you know, with affordable renting places, you know, affordable housing. And I felt kind of a threat as well. So it was offensive, and I felt about a threat, you know, about suing the city. You know, yes, for not agreeing to grandfathering some of the STRs in our community. We are here to listen. I am here to listen. And yes, to think about that our essential workers, you know, were being offended. You know, something they cannot say something in return. Makes me think twice about, you know, should we allow short-term rentals when we have people running short-term rentals that are gonna be offensive to our community? Something to think about. The security of our community becoming offensive. We know the need of the, you know, the financial support for the families, you know, for the city. But please, you know, if everything's within the law, you know, our staff did a great job, you know, reporting on the changes that we requested. They were done. As we, as we requested, we listened to your conversations, your comments. So let's leave it at that. You know, thank you for, you know, for making those changes. You know, and it looks like 60 days looks like a good number. You know, for, for short term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez. Any more comments? If not, Councilmember.
I. I, I can support the 60 days maximum unhosed, although. Now ideally, it'd be great if. Say somebody was on a two month sabbatical or an extended vacation, then somebody else stays in the house. And makes it a hosted, you know, allowing people to leave, have proxies, you know. That's what I would really like, but I, I can support that the 60 days unhosed. I would actually, spending a lot of time thinking about it and talking to people, I would be willing to. Grandfather in. Existing operators in good standing, that is no complaints. It would be grandfather, we'd be grandfathering in them as operators. With existing properties, no new properties, any additional property, well. Beyond what's grandfathered in, you know, they, they couldn't do anymore. They have, you know, two now, now that's. I, I think that would relieve a lot of tension and then, you know, apply. The new ordinance provisions to, you know, any addition. It would have to be somebody in good standing, no complaints. And no additional. But only for the existing operations, they still have to reapply every year. But I can understand that where, you know, folks have been operating in good faith. Operating good operations, no complaints, paying their TOT, I'd be willing to grandfather. You know, those existing operators. And apply the ordinance above and beyond, you know. Those, those homes, those, those operations. Like to just propose that to my fellow council members for discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember R. Beck. Before we address that point, Councilmember Penrose, you know, let's come back to Councilmember R. Beck, discussion on that. Point about grandfathering in existing units. Councilmember Penrose?
Yeah. I am not interested in grandfathering in or even allowing. Single owner to operate. Multiple. Short term rental. Homes. To me, that's, that's, you might as well buy a motel. You're not providing. Primary residence. What you're doing is making money off of existing property. Housing stock. That could otherwise be used for long term residences. So anything that promotes. The idea. That the owner of a home. Is not going to be living in that home while he rents it out on a short term basis. I'm against. I would even like to see a strike fee. Provision that. An owner could have a long term laissez. Managing his property and renting out to short term, for short term rental. That's not primary, that is, that is undermining. The. The primary purpose. The Coastal Commission has stated. That housing. Is for residential use and that undermines it. So that's where I'm coming from.
I do think that the, the proposed ordinance, you could only have one. It would be any operators, and I think there's only a couple that have more than one, that would be grandfathered in, but. Proposed, the proposed ordinance limits you to just one. I just wanted to, you know, to point that out. And I agree with you that I, I have a problem with the allowing. Owner or long term tenant. I don't get the long term tenant operating the home. As a short term rental. There's got to be some handshake between the renter and the owner. And I would think that, that sort of flimsy, I would say flimsy, one year requirement for being a long term tenant. You know, you just, you know, install, you know, your agent, your proxy, you know, I. I, I would be perfectly happy stripping out the long term tenant language. So I agree with you on that.
Other comments from Councilmember R. Beck or Jimenez? Who's got on the table?
In, in terms of grandfathering in, all the reasons that have been given. For this existing ordinance and, and Councilman Ruddick's original arguments, I agree with completely that. We, we really want to preserve housing stock. I don't understand why it, just because somebody has in the past rented out part of his or her house. That, that in and of itself to me is not grounds for changing the ordinance. I, I really think it's, it was well thought out. And I'm in favor of it as currently drafted.
Councilmember, running aside, your hand up if you want to.
Yeah, so one of the reasons I would entertain grandfathering in, you know, for. Good operators with no complaints. I, I think Matthew Dayton makes a good point about the small number. That exists at the moment. I wouldn't grandfather the 100 that we had pre-COVID. But I think. If it's less than 1% of our housing stock and it's just 50, 50 operations. It seems to me that if you have a small number, good operators, they're here, you know, they're engaged with the community. And I can see grandfathering in as a way to reduce. Conflict. Right? So I, I think it's worth the council's consideration. I, I stand by my original argument about protecting the primary residential use. I, I could go for, you know. No unhosed along with Deborah, but I, I think there are some good policy reasons to support grandfathering in. Good operator. Just throwing it out there.
I just have a quick question, just to run by. Staff, Jill, Barbara, Catherine. In terms of not grandfathering in, does that create any additional issues as far as the coastal commission is concerned? So considering the ordinance is now drafted. Grandfathering in anybody. In other words, coastal commission doesn't like that with the 60 days. That's one issue, but I'm just saying. I don't think grandfathering is going to have anything to do with grandfathering or not. I just want to double check that.
Mr. Mayor, why don't I go first? And I think you'll get a comment from all three of us. Your city attorney also has a comment probably on the question that came up about. Long term less fees being able to do short term as well. So we'll hit all three. So on, on the grandfathering, I'll let Jill hit the coastal commission question, but. If that's the way the council wants to go, we would just need to be crystal clear about the point that Councilmember Ruddick made that they. The current ones that were the group that were to be grandfathered were in quote unquote good standing. And by good standing. We would of course mean that they didn't, didn't have any complaints, were legal and didn't have other code violations. And so I just wanted to clarify that, that that's something important that we would have to look at. You're about to consider a new ordinance. And so I understand grandfathering means. You get in before this ordinance, but there are other codes that apply. And so we are constant, I don't want to say constantly, but we're dealing with other code issues occasionally. And so we would check that as well. So. We would want that to be a part of it, if you were to go that way. I'll let Jill hit the part about the coastal commission. I, I. I'll let her hit that part. I don't want to speculate. And then Catherine, you can weigh in as well.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Council. I, I'd like to respond both about grandfathering and about the coastal commission. Grandfathering can mean a lot of different things. And we need to, if, if you're going to pursue grandfathering, we really need to understand what you intend to grandfather. If you're grandfathering. Not requiring primary residents, for example. Any, anything that we're bringing into the ordinance that would affect the operation of a current operator. Could be a term that. Maybe not appropriate, for example, to be grandfathered or potentially could be grandfathered. It's very complicated. There are also. Operators with STRs that are not. Fully compliant with other codes. We might not have complaints, but we have, we have other violations and they can't be grandfathered. So I just want to maintain the expectations around that and it's, it's really a tricky, tricky item. We respect it. It's why. This process has taken so long and it's why we've tried so hard to do outreach and make sure our operators are involved in. Giving input into the decision making because we know how important it is to you to listen to your constituents and. You also implement the coastal act here. And so there's, there's that too. Which is the segue to the coastal commission. We are aware of some ordinances where they have allowed for grandfathering. I don't think it's been the kind of on the mat argument idea that they've had before them. The number of nights. Seems to rise to the surface. There's another thing that came up in the Delmar case, for example, where Delmar is suing the coastal commission. And I, I don't even know how that's been resolved at this point. It was about the length of stay. Delmar had come in with a minimum length of stay of seven nights. You don't see that in your ordinance. We didn't think that was true to Half Moon Bay. We know we have weekend visitors and shorter lengths of stay. And that helps our operators serve our visitors and that, that's why you don't see that particular provision. So those are things that we've definitely seen debated. We do not have feedback from our coastal commission. Colleagues on the draft ordinance at this point. We have been working with them. For quite a, quite a long time and we've shared these drafts with them. They have had a staff change and they are trying to catch up. They, they are just really overloaded. And so we've just tried to keep them informed with every single meeting and every change that has happened. Through the planning commission steps and now through, through your most recent meeting. And, and what we have before you tonight. So that's what I know about them off the top of my head on grandfathering, but I do, I do want to express. If you're going to continue the discussion around that, I might get a little bit pokey on it to really understand it. We would recommend that you not on, at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes, I have a question. About how many short term rents will be allowed per year?
So thank you on that question. There is no cap proposed. This was discussed in depth with. The planning commission and Joe Buscher, our community preservation specialist, and I. Did a lot of research on caps in other cities and we also looked at how the coastal commission reviewed caps. And we had a conference call or two with our coastal commission peers about caps to make sure we really understood them. So there is no limit, but there is a provision in your ordinance. For monitoring and this is, this is frame setting. This, this was in your staff report from August that I think is really good to. Bring back into the room. The planning commission's intent and looking at the ordinance, even if there are only 45 or 100 of these. And by the way, we. Have not spent hundreds of thousands of dollars developing this ordinance. I just feel like I need to make that clear for the record. Even though there's a few, this is an ordinance for. A long period of time. There, they look with a very long lens as does council. So it isn't just about what's happening in the moment now. It's really looking at trends and what can change and cumulative impacts. And what we know to be true about STRs is that. You can, you can get clusters of them in really popular neighborhoods for, in particular, the western neighborhoods that are closest to the beach. And we do see a bit of a pattern. We presented that to you at the last meeting in a map. We showed you the percentage of the housing stock that was being used for STRs. It was over 6% in some of the neighborhoods. And so I, I do think that's a very important factor. Coastal commissions, I believe, has approved some caps where they were seeing densities of more on the range of 10%. We weren't in that, that area. So that is why we put a monitoring provision in your ordinance so that we can stay ahead of it. And I, I hope that answers your question.
Well, my question was. Thinking about the housing stock that we have in Half Moon Bay, about how we're going to be able, how we could lose, you know, the housing for community need. And then also. We can always have our, let's say, a number, let's say 50, 50 STRs per year. And they can always be reviewed at the end of the year, if there were any, any serious problems. And maybe have them reapply, you know, every year, the same STRs will apply. And with a review and maybe there could be a rotation of the STRs in our community. You know, who knows, like, kind of like a lot, maybe. That way we would not lose our housing stock or something we can do, like I said, number of STRs that will be allowed in, does it have from bay? Would that be possible?
Well, anything's. Anything's possible, Councilmember Jimenez. What I hear is that we have 1% stock right now of the existing housing stock that is short term rentals. I heard. Jill say that, yeah, there sometimes can be density in a community. I'd rather monitor it than necessarily react right now. In other words, if. All of a sudden things start approaching 2, 3% of housing stock. I think that. As someone, you know, certainly uses, uses Airbnbs and other communities and rather stay there than hotel. A lot of people, as a town of tourism, it's nice to have those options, as long as you don't feel it's seriously diminishing the stock. I personally like the ordinance as written. I. Would go along with staff's recommendations not to go for grandfathering right now. Stick with the 60 days. And. Would anyone like to entertain a motion at this point?
No, I'd, I'd like to hear Catherine's response to my question in particular.
Which was. Called leasing, right?
Yeah, so staff did consider that proposal to, is require only property owners to be able to operate. STRs and we are not recommending that. Primarily due to an equity issue. We were not able to identify any other. STR ordinances that had such a restriction and out of, you know, fairness to tenants. We wanted to basically, you know, provide the same benefits to a tenant as we would to a property owner. With, with, with constraints. So, you know, we have safeguards in place such as. You know, we'd have to, the, the tenant would have to have. So, you know, we have safeguards in place such as, you know, we'd have to, the, the tenant would have to have. Written authorization from the landlord. They sell to be a primary resident with proof such as a, you know, at least a one year lease. And as a practical matter, we, we don't anticipate that very many tenants are going to take advantage of this. But on its face, you know, we are recommending to not, you know. Put tenants in a position of not being able to do something that a property owner would be able to do, just to avoid, you know, the equity argument. So that's, that's the main reason, you know, we considered that, but did not bring that proposal forward. And while I have the floor, I also did want to respond just to the, you know, there was a threat of, of litigation. If, if the, you know, ordinance doesn't allow for grandfathering and I don't see that as a credible threat. This is not a situation like, you know, where we're taking all of the property owner's value. Being able to operate STR is a privilege that does increase value, but it's not necessarily a right. So I wanted to make that clear on the record as well.
Actually, I would like to understand this equity issue you're stating. I don't understand at all why a tenant should have the same rights as a property owner regarding. Short term renting the residence. I don't get where the equity issue is. Why, why do they have the same rights at all? I don't get that at all. What, what kind of equity? I've never thought that as a tenant anywhere in a house, I should then have the right to Airbnb. I don't get it.
Untested, it's untested, of course, because we haven't been able to identify, you know, any STR ordinance that has. You know, such a, such a, you know, restriction allowing property owners but not tenants. But it does, by, by not, you know, calling that out, it avoids an equal protection. Basically, we're treating two classes of, of, of people differently without evidence that the tenant's necessarily going to do a worse job. I think hosts than property owners.
It's no constant, it sounds like somewhat constitutional. I'm sorry, I see no, no basis for any equity whatsoever on that. I don't, I really.
I agree with the player. I don't get it. Sorry. I just don't get it.
May I share just the lens that we were looking at this with? And it's not a land use issue so much as about supplemental income for a household. Any household. And if there's a household that can qualify and operate an STR. According to the draft ordinance that's before you, whether they're renting or owning the property. We believe that there was potential for that to be an appropriate thing for, for supporting that. I, I have, Catherine, since we talked, I, I think there is a city in, in the coastal zone. That I did find that required owner occupancy, but it took, I, I had to go back through and I, I could check it again. So I, I think it's been done, but it's really, I agree with the city attorney. It's, it is not typical. The, the listing of all the ordinances that the coastal commission has approved in the coastal zone. Acknowledge whether owner occupancy is a requirement or not. And most of the time, almost every time, it's, it's not. So we just share that with you. The code is written in a way that we can take that out and we've talked about that as well. But that was the lens that we were looking at it from.
I'm, I'm just trying to think of a practical application. I mean, typically a tenant in a multi bedroom house. Can sublet a room with landlord's permission. So I just don't see why this has to come into a short term rental. Ordinance at all, because that's pretty much established right of a tenant. Because very often that's what college students do, right? You know, some, some of the room. There's a primary tenant that has to do with the landlord and, you know, other folks rotate in. So. I just didn't quite, yeah, council member.
I don't get how a long term tenant can be a responsible party, for one. And if I owned a home and had a long term tenant, I would want a cut of that income. You know, so how supplemental it's going to be for the, for the tenant, I'm not so sure. And I don't see how they can be a responsible party. My guess, the coastal commission. Is only interested in maximizing visitor access to the coast, public access to the coast. And that's why long term tenant is fine. If you don't allow long term tenants, then that's a restriction on maximizing access to the coast. I don't think it has anything to do with equity whatsoever. You know, owners have different rights than, than tenants and owners control. And they are the responsible party for the property. So I, to me, it's just, I don't, I don't understand it. The explanations given don't shed any light for me. I just having a really hard time with that.
Let me, let me give it a try. And Mr. Mayor, your line of thought started to confuse me. Because I originally thought you were in line with council member Ruddick. But then your suggestion that it's very typical for leases to be able to sublease or it is a provision that's allowed, allowed and is done so. Is more along the lines that of why, of why, of why the city attorney made the argument that she did. That it should be allowed. And so I think, I don't know if it's so much an equitable issue. I don't want to jump in here on, on what the city attorney said. But I think she, I think she was hitting that point from the legal issue. I mean, ultimately, it's a legal issue. And if you put that provision in that did not allow a lessee to do the short term tenant. What do they have? Is there some type of legal right they have to challenge that? If, if their landlord put that in their agreement that they could do an STR and they then sign that agreement. Can, can, can we legally say that they cannot do that? Would they have some kind of challenge? And then to the point that it's untested, you know, then what's the risk and is the risk worth taking? So I think that's still a question for Catherine. And if that's, if that's where the council wants to go, maybe we need a little more time just to assess the risk. And so you understand the risk, if that's something you want to do. But I think it came down to really the, the, the legal issue behind any kind of equitable equity argument. That might exist in any kind of laws that we would have to look into. I would also just make another suggestion generally. That we still have a few more items on our agenda. If this is something the council feels. You know, there's, there's, there's a couple of other issues that I don't think were resolved. If we need more time, we could certainly continue the first reading to another date. I'll leave that up to you, but I just wanted to remind you, if you think we're getting close to concurrence in a motion, that's fine. But if we need more time, that opportunity is certainly there for you and that would, that would give us some time to look at some of these issues right up. Thanks.
Well, I'm still ready to move forward with a motion unless council member Penrose is insisting on something different.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said, I'm ready to move forward with the motion unless you're not satisfied with this issue around the tenant.
I, I am not convinced one way or the other about it. It still remains a question in my mind. I certainly would take the, the word of our attorney on it. On the other hand, the equity issue is, is a separate, to me, it's a separate legal issue. From the one that I'm thinking in terms of it. And my objection to the, to the lessee. Being allowed to sublet or rent out as a short term rental. Is that it becomes a situation where the owner is not living on the property. And he has someone who has no known interest in that property. Could be a relative of the property owner who's just in there to, to be a name. And, and I, I, I don't, I don't see that as being responsive. To the question in mind about, about our housing stock and on our lack of housing stock.
So do we need to move forward here to, we're approving every, is there consensus to approve everything else other than that issue at this point? In the existing ordinance is drafted. Redrafted.
Okay with me.
It's fine with me. Anyone else?
I'm with me.
Okay. So I just want to give enough clear direction here to staff. So. We'd like to move forward with the ordinances written. And then have some. More suggestions regarding. The right of a sub less C. To resolve this piece. So it's not just some owner assigning someone. For the sake of basically continuing to have extra houses to rent. And just basically almost like appointing a manager in a hotel to manage. Is that what you're, is that the analogy, correct analogy? Council member Penrose that we're thinking about? Yep. So how do we address that?
I'll just take one, would like to take a stab at, just one, one clarifying question in terms of, of the direction. So if there were a tenant that were serving as an operator, they, they would have to be on site. So they would, you know, there would be a primary resident. I just want to make, make that clear. So there would be, the primary residents quite, still apply even with tenants. And then also, I think this was already clarified, but just to, just to make sure, there is a revision in here. That says the maximum number of STRs per operator is one. So an operator can only operate one STR in the city, which I think does address the concern that, you know, there'd be multiple owners. With multiple STRs.
Got it.
The side council does still want more, more information regarding options around. Lesses as operators. Is that?
So it's limited to one. I mean, that works for me. Council member, right? Thank you.
So, you know, somebody comes in, they signs a lease, they sign a one year lease agreement. And all of a sudden, they're a long term tenant. For me, a long term tenant is somebody who's lived there for a while. Not just signed a one year lease, you know, so I would feel more comfortable if, you know, the long term lease is defined as. Two or more years actually living there, not according to the terms of their lease. But how long they've actually lived in the place. That would make me feel more comfortable. Because they've committed to the place, they renewed their, their tenancy, they have a record with the property owner. Rather than just, you know, somebody comes in, some agent of the property owner signs a one year lease and all of a sudden they're a long term tenant. That doesn't work for me. They need to demonstrate that they've lived there long term. That would make me feel more comfortable.
I'd be comfortable with that as well.
Yeah, I like that idea of a minimum term. And, yeah, because, you know, you don't always want to, you don't want to rule by the hypothetical exception. Of someone abusing it all, but rather the norm. So I think having someone at least there for two years, living there. Not just renting it, not being absent.
Renewal, so they've had a successful year, you know, and so for the, over the two year period, they've actually had, you know, a lease agreement and a renewal. You know, so that they know that they're solid, they're, they're, that tenant is a good investment for the property owner. Because they, you know, kept things up. They don't have any complaints, you know, that sort of.
Does that give you enough clear direction? I think we have a consensus. Yes.
Staff, staff really likes your discussion and your, your resolution. We intended for the year lease to have been already completed and maybe that wasn't clear enough. But if it's two years, having lived in, in that, on that property. That is an easy amendment for us to make for your second reading and we understand the direction. It's also very straightforward to administer, which we greatly appreciate. And furthermore, it is consistent with the findings that are included in your draft ordinance. That are also consistent with your land use plan for housing stock preservation and subordinate use to residential living purposes. So we commend your discussion and resolution. Thank you.
Catherine, do we need a roll call then to move forward, to, to move forward on existing ordinance with the amendment for two years of presence?
Yes, I would recommend a rule call vote with the first reading with the amendment that the, the proof would have to be at least a two year lease.
Thank you. Let's have a roll call, please.
If we get a vote in a second.
Yeah, we need a motion in a second and then a roll call.
Someone like to make that motion or?
Yes, moved as per staff's recommendation.
Great, thank you.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Council member Jimenez?
Yes.
Council member Penrose?
Yes.
Council member Rabbat?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Raddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. I know that took a bit of extra time, but these are important issues in this community. So I'm glad we got a consensus. By the way, just to mention, process wise, I know there were a couple of hands raised by members of the public. And the public comments section, session was closed. So I officially open it and I close it. And that's why we don't call on other folks after we close the public comment session. Just so folks know why we didn't, some of the raised hands. Okay. It's pumpkin festival. Moving on to resolutions and staff reports. Our next item is whether or not to grant a special event permit for the pumpkin festival. And I think we're gonna have a staff report here. Is that right?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and I also believe Cameron Palmer, representing the beautification committee, is here. And I've asked Jessica to actually move him from the audience over, just so he can participate if there's Q and A. And make a presentation and be a part of the discussion. So she is probably doing that. I'll, I'll keep my presentation very brief. Matthew Chittister is also here to jump in and answer questions or provide additional data. But this item is on the agenda. The council asked for it to come back at a previous meeting. I think it was council member Penrose first and then others agreed to bring this back for discussion. There's a short staff report in your packet that simply gives the context about that, about the festival and where we're at. I don't have to belabor that. But where, I think the best thing is for you to see if Mr. Palmer wants to make any kind of presentation. And have questions for him. We've also committed a staff that we would provide a couple of things. One, I think it was requested that if we had the latest data from the county on cases, hospitalizations, things like that. That we'd be ready to do that and Matthew is ready to do that. We were also asked to provide a list of other festivals. Or similar events that have either been canceled or, or have not been canceled. We do have that list and we can share that list and answer questions about that. Definitely, there were some themes that developed when we did that exercise in terms of what kind of events are going on and what kind of events are being canceled. The main one, I'll just mention now, before we even get into it, is that clearly we're seeing a trend. That events that are going on that are large, like sporting events or big music events, they have a gate. And so they are proceeding but requiring proof of vaccination or test. So that was one theme that came out for sure. In our exercise of looking at what's going on elsewhere in terms of these kind of events, which ones are being canceled, which ones aren't. So we can answer questions about that. We can answer questions about the, the data that's provided by the county in terms of cases. And attached to the staff report is both the, the actual application that the beautification committee submitted. It's mentioned in the staff report that it's a reduced version, one day, smaller footprint. And they also attachment two, I believe it is, attachment one, application. Attachment two is a one page list of safety precautions and protocols that the beautification committee had proposed. Should they be allowed to proceed. So with that, I'll keep it short, turn it back over to you. I can see Mr. Palmer has made it onto the stage. Matthew's also here. So I'll turn it back to you on how to have the discussion from here.
And I will also, just before, I also had asked staff. And I will also, just before, I also had asked staff to look into all the similar type events that were canceled over this last year. And with the exception of Millbury, almost every art and wine festival on the peninsula in the area has not been granted a permit and I did check with other councils and and I think people also probably saw that the Kings Mountain Craft Fair, most recently over Labor Day, was put into a Zoom, Zoom, cop, Zoom format instead of fog festival. So it looked like the majority of these type of festivals have been canceled. So I thank staff for looking into that. Okay, yeah, happy to turn it over to Cameron for.
Okay, great. Can you folks hear me?
Sure can, thank you.
Okay, terrific.
For being here with us this evening.
Okay, no problem. I, I can appreciate your hard work, everyone. That's a long night I've been on since you started. So anyway, good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members and city staff. My name is Cameron Palmer, the president of the Half of Bay Beautification Committee, which also puts on the annual pumpkin festival, the great pumpkin way off, and also the old fashioned Fourth of July committee parade that we just held. It was very successful. On behalf of my board of directors, we would like to thank you for your time and effort, considering tonight's subject. As you know, last year's festival was canceled due to the country and, excuse me, due to the county and state regulations as we were in the heart of COVID. This year, this is not the case. The county is not requiring that outdoor festivals be canceled. I repeat, they're not requiring that. So we've been working diligently all year long. Despite this, however, our committee is going to do the unprecedented measures to ensure a greatly reduced risk. We're proposing a one day festival instead of a normal two day festival, but with the following precautions. Our big picture plan is to be in compliance with the current city, county and state health and safety guidelines for outdoor events that are in place at the time of the festival. This will be an important part of the messaging and communication around the festival. The fact is 91% of eligible San Mateo County residents have been vaccinated as of September 1st, 2021. Health and county and safety guidelines, the festival will be held in accordance with current state, county and city health and safety guidelines for outdoor events and it will be posted on our festival website. Health guidelines strongly recommend that attendees be fully vaccinated. If not fully vaccinated, guidelines strongly recommend that the attendees obtain a negative COVID-19 test prior to attending the event and wear face coverings at the event. We also will have a vaccination pop up tent. The festival is partnering with Coastside Hope to host a vaccination pop up site at the festival. And we actually just did this at the Fourth of July parade as well. Additional majors, measures, reduction of both the exhibit space and inventory by more than 50% to allow more open spacing and pedestrian flow. All arts and crafts and food vendors and beverage and the kids activity booths will be staffed and managed by local coast side residents. In a normal year, most of the arts and craft exhibitors come from all over the West Coast, Oregon, Washington, Arizona and beyond. That's not going to happen this year. We're only having local arts and craft vendors, local food booth and, and game vendors for the kids area. We recommend, we're going to recommend face coverings for all when not actively eating or drinking. Enhance hand washing and hand sanitizing stations throughout the entire festival. We'll have plenty of face coverings on hand for distribution as warranted for free, even though I think at this point, most of us probably have at least a dozen or two in our car. That's just the way it is. Signage placed at key points throughout the event site to reflect all of the above. Scale down marketing and promotion. You will not see an ad for this event over the hill, only coast side. We want our coast siders to know, but you will not see any advertising. You will not see any social media on Twitter or Facebook at all. If people want to know what's going on, they're wanting to go to the website, but it, it's not going to be due to our promotion of it. In closing, we as a festival committee are trying to keep a smaller festival field, but still allow our 30 nonprofits that participate each year, an opportunity to make much needed funds. Please do consider that when thinking of your decision. Last year, our festival committee was able to make nearly all of our coast side nonprofits whole from our festival savings account and a very generous donation by Mr. Joe Kaczek. Unfortunately, the well has run dry and we cannot do this for 2021. We wish we could. Our committee is hoping to run a safe one day, 49.5 is what we deemed a 49.5 festival and pray next year, we can truly have a great 50th year celebration in 2022. Thank you, I'm here for comments and questions.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I'll have some clarifying questions now before we open up for public comment. We'll start with council member Penrose.
All right, I didn't realize, I thought it was time for discussion. I'll wait until it's time.
Okay, any clarifying questions for Cameron, council member Rabbat?
We were promised Matthew was going to tell us about the, the current case rate and I, I'd love to hear that.
Okay, so we'll have that first and then we'll come back around. Okay, great. Matthew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. So, you know, the county's done a great job of providing ongoing information about COVID here in San Mateo County. And at this point, we're receiving weekly updates from the county health officer. And we received one today, so we are getting the most up to date information possible. As Cameron mentioned, all of eligible residents, 12 and up in San Mateo County, more than 90% have received at least one vaccination dose. That is very, very high and, and I think we're one of the leaders in the nation, the county. I will point out that three of our coast side communities sit at the bottom of vaccination rates here in San Mateo County, which is of concern. And of course, we, we all know that communities of color and our Latinx community also lags. So that is something we're going to want to consider and think about. Those, those numbers sit around 60% compared to the 90% overall. As far as how things are going with infections here in San Mateo County, if you look at the data, we are up over the last couple of months over where we were this summer. I think we had a lot of excitement this summer. I know when Cameron reached out to us about both Fourth of July and the pumpkin festival in, in June, there was a lot of excitement because we all felt like we had turned a corner and things were getting better. And it felt really good to start planning these events. And, you know, the Fourth of July parade went really, really well. Unfortunately, we know that as we've moved into the school year and the late summer, we've seen with the new variants, numbers surge, not to the degree that they were earlier this year in, in January, December and January after the holidays, but, but back to levels we saw last summer and last fall. So the most up to date data shows a slight increase this week over last week in new cases per day. Right now in San Mateo County, we're averaging about 120 new cases per day. So again, that is up over last week, but significantly down over the month of August. So we, we had a kind of a peak that we hit in August and things have kind of come down over the last couple of weeks. And this week they've kind of leveled out and bumped up a, a, a small bit, but not a significant amount. There's a question about hospital beds and the use of hospital beds. Those numbers also continue down, but have gone up slightly over the last week, but are significantly lower than at the peak of the pandemic. I think what's important when we talk about hospital beds is not just the number of patients hospitalized, but when we start talking about things like acute care beds, ICU beds and ventilators. And according to the county data, there are plenty of both acute and ICU beds available. And then the county also has what we call surge beds, which are if, if there was a surge and a, and a run on or a need for additional beds for people experiencing acute issues or long term ICU type issues, beds that can be converted. And there's a significant one, a number of those available as well. At this point, none of the search beds are in use. And then ventilators, the current usage is very low compared to the overall available inventory. So things are looking good from a hospital standpoint. I will say anecdotally, my wife is an ED nurse in another county and she's been very, very busy. And I think that's different than what they're experiencing in hospitals in San Mateo County. So San Mateo County, I think continues to lead and do well. But just like other places, we've seen an uptick over the last couple of months. And hopefully it keeps trickling off. I'm not sure if, if this level of detail is extremely helpful to you. What I, what I can say is compared to when this question was asked at the last council meeting a couple of weeks ago, we're doing better, but there has not been a significant change in the number of infections and the utilization of hospital assets.
Matthew, with this positivity rate, you know, back in our zone model, red zones, purple zones, still keep us in a red or purple zone? Are you not sure?
That, you know, I apologize, I didn't look at that, but I can, I can actually, while we're meeting and you're discussing, I'll, I'll take a look at that and I'll get back to you. What I can say is the RF, which is the, you know, whether we're trending upward or downward as far as the disease growing or shrinking, the number of people infected by people that are already infected is below one, which is, was always the target before. I think we're at a point nine one RF right now. So that's, that's a positive. It means that we're, we're making progress on the disease as opposed to losing ground.
The unknown factor, of course, is the schools just opening now and what that'll look like in three weeks or so. Okay, thanks. Thank you, Matthew. Any other data that anyone would like to hear, any other clarifying questions to Cameron or Matthew before?
Can you still hear me? Can you still hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, Matthew had stated that he had the city staff dig around for other places that have been canceled. Maybe there's been more recently canceled, but my latest data showed Millbury having a festival, Redwood City, Mountain View, Los Altos, Los Gatos, Los Gatos and Campbell, all having outdoor festivals. Maybe you could share whether you think that's true or not, but that's, that's my latest research.
I don't know if all of those data doubts, I haven't checked each one of those. I know a lot of other peninsula ones did cancel, so I have to.
Well, when I last, when I last checked, they were all having outdoor festivals because once again, San Mateo County and the state have not canceled outdoor festivals. Of course they haven't canceled baseball games, football games, concerts, shoreline, lots of other things as well. I just want to make that point. We're not trying to totally break all the rules here. We're just trying to work within the parameters of the rules.
And, and Mr. Mayor, members of council, like I said, we, we do have a table. We, we, we've been working on this list for the last couple of weeks and we can share it if it's helpful. But I would, I would acknowledge kind of the point that Cameron just made, which is our table is not an exhaustive list. We did the best we could on ones that were canceled and then events that weren't canceled. But I think that the pitfall of sharing it is we will admit it is not an exhaustive list. We did not pick up everything. The one obvious one, of course, is the Millbury Art and Wine Festival, because that was just last weekend. That did go on. I, I, I don't know how it went. I believe Sal may know if there's questions about it, he can answer those. But it's also one of those things that, you know, it probably did go on, it probably was somewhat crowded, but they're not going to know whether, you know, there was an increase in infection for a while. So I don't know how helpful that'll be. So again, we have a list if you want to see it. Matthew will share it if we get to that point, but if we admit it's not, we, we got as many as we could, but it's not exhausted.
And Bob, I can just, I can just share, I did speak with staff from Millbury today about how their festival went over the weekend. They, they didn't really have good estimates yet, but, but, you know, tens of thousands of people attended. They, they said that all of their vendors were, were very careful, wore masks. And they encouraged strongly that people wear masks, even though it was an outdoor event. And they gave their vendors the latitude to ask people not to come into their booths if they weren't masked up. They didn't have any incidents, no issues. But as Bob said, we won't really know if, if there was any sort of, you know, super spreader type event for several weeks, probably.
Okay, thank you. So if there's no other clarifying questions, I'll open it up for public comment. I think we only have one. Couple more here. So right now, if anyone else would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. Go into the participant icon and you'll see an opportunity to raise your hand. And we'll set the timer at three minutes. And let's have our first speaker, please.
Thanks, Mayor. The first speaker is John Olin. John, you have three minutes.
Hello all, thank you for the opportunity. I have to say, it's a, this is a really sad decision that's, that's going to be made. It's unfortunate that we find ourselves at this point. And I do appreciate that there's a lot of work put into the festival on the part of a lot of people. And to many people, it really is an important factor of our, our facet of life here on the coast side. Something a lot of people are proud of, look at it as family tradition, get back together. God, we all really need that right now. It's been horrible two years. But the truth of it is, your biggest unknown is the virus itself. You've already got the moo, or is it new? Mutation is now in the country everywhere. If you notice your saw spikes in October or in August, that occurs after July 4th. And you'll probably see a spike in, in the hospital activity after Labor Day because people getting together. I appreciate the efforts, the idea of consolidating the festival into one day. But the first thing I thought that would mean is that would just concentrate the number of people, that there would be more people there than on that one day. And so I see the efforts here are to just advertise it locally and try to maintain the tradition. It really is important to a lot of people. But then the statistics stated by Mr. Chidster about the vaccination rate of our local communities really has to kind of push you over the edge. If what we're going to do is invite locals, then the 91% vaccination rate in San Mateo County really isn't a deciding factor. The factor is, you know, what's the vaccination rate of the people you're going to invite, invite? And it doesn't sound like it's the best that it could be. And along with the, you know, the, the Delta is now out there and the move variant is out there. And six weeks from now, who knows what's going to be out there? It's moving fast, it's changing. Garlic Festival, they went through a drive through thing this year. I'm afraid that the only responsible decision that you can make as a council is to not grant the permit. And I think that's a really hard, horrible decision to have to make. It's like, no one would feel happy that you do. But you would be getting support from at least some people in the city for doing, but I think you all know in your heart is the thing to do. Thanks for my time.
Next speaker, please.
Thanks, John. Our next speaker is Maureen Fleming. Maureen, you have three minutes.
Good evening. I want to totally express my absolute support for this pumpkin festival to take place in October of 2021. As a country, from March 2020 to September 2021, we have moved so far from flattening the curve. we have moved so far from flattening the curve to vaccines and therapeutics and to a significant understanding of COVID nineteen and related viruses. We need to follow the science. We need to understand that there is a difference between dying of COVID and dying with COVID. COVID has become so highly publicized. Fear reigns. The politicians want to keep the virus alive and they want to keep their power alive. Last winter, I do not remember one news outlet discussing flu season or children getting the flu. Did the flu just disappear? It is time to stop being a nanny state. Let people make their individual decision on whether it is wise for them to stay at home or whether they would like to enjoy the community of others at a joyful pumpkin festival. If the Half Moon Bay Politic Bureau would like to do something constructive, it would be wise for you to use your influence to seal the southern border. We have drugs, gangs, terrorists, and COVID coming into this country at the southern border. Half Moon Bay City Council, it is time for you to relinquish your control and let people live their lives. People should stay at home if they feel comfortable staying at home. But if they want to attend the pumpkin festival, they should attend the festival. And finally, I would like to add that I believe many people are expressing the notion that in six weeks, the numbers on COVID will even look better. So thank you for your time.
Do we have any more speakers?
That concludes public comments, Mayor.
Public session's now closed. So why don't we open this up for discussion? Councilmember Penrose. Your muted council, Councilwoman Penrose, can you?
Yes, thank you. I'm having trouble with my computer tonight. I'm sorry. This is probably one of the hardest, saddest things I've had to talk about on council in a long time. I'm going to recommend that we do not hold the pumpkin festival. I'll start out by saying that. But it makes me very sad. It makes me saddest of all for the nonprofits that are going to suffer from lack of income, which has been provided by the pumpkin festival all these many years. I'm sad for the vendors who will lose income and lose a chance to, to show their wares. I'm very sad for Cameron and everyone else on the beautification committee who works so hard to make things right and who have modified things in such a way as to make it almost safe. I attended a public meeting with our county manager and our chief medical officer, Dr. Scott Morrow, a month ago. And I asked the question of Dr. Morrow. Dr. Morrow, would you attend a pumpkin festival in Half Moon Bay? And his response was, well, legally, I can't close the pumpkin festival because the state has said that I can't do that. But personally, I would not attend. That's following the science. Things have not gotten measurably better. In fact, there are new variants on the horizon as we speak. We are struggling with Delta. Delta has become very contagious, especially among children. This is not over. I would love for it to be over. I would love it more than anybody else in this room would love it. But it's not over and it's not going to be over soon. Hopefully, we can keep up our vaccination rates. That's great. If we're talking about who's coming to the festival, Cameron has made a good point and really good effort in saying that we're not going to be advertising it nationally. But that doesn't stop people who've been coming to the pumpkin festival from all over the nation and from outside of our nation every year. Two hundred thousand of them from calling the Chamber of Commerce and saying, is the pumpkin festival on this year? People are going to be coming. They're not going to bother to call. They're going to assume it's on. In terms of recommendations for, for being safe, if you are not wearing a mask when you're eating and you really can't wear a mask when you're eating or when you're drinking, when do people get to eat and drink? They eat and drink while they're walking around and looking at things. They grab a hot dog. They grab a piece of pumpkin pie. They walk around with food. They take their mask off. You cannot socially distance folks in a situation like this. I, the one scenario that I could see having the pumpkin festival in would be if we could gate, gate the pumpkin festival and check people for vaccination and masks before they enter. If that, if that was something we were doing, I'd be all for it. I don't know how possible it is. I assume it's very difficult or you'd have thought of it. But if you could put a big gate around it and require people to show their vaccination card, I'd be fine with that. But that's the only scenario. I don't think it's worth risking anyone's illness, any child, any adult, any old person or their death. That's all.
I think Councilmember Penrose, Councilmember Robert.
I agree with Deborah and John Olem that it's, it's a horrible shame that we must be responsible and unfortunately, the nonprofits are going to suffer for it. But let me tell you where I'm coming from. If you were at the old fashioned Fourth of July parade, you'd see that there were more people there than ever before, as far as I, I've been going to them for a few years. And this one was more well attended. And the reason for that is there's just pent up demand to come and celebrate, and that's perfectly understandable. So no matter what the beautification committee does, we're going to have, who knows, hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, maybe more because of the fact that people just are itching to come to the pumpkin festival. And I don't blame them, but that's the reality. Then coupled with the fact that there's going to be an enormous number of people, no matter what we do, is the, the size of the venue is going to be smaller than it's been before. The people are going to be crowded into four blocks instead of ten. So this is like the worst of all possible worlds. You have more people in a smaller area. And the potential for a super spreader event is there. I don't know, maybe it wouldn't happen. But as a responsible person who's interested in public safety, I can't in good conscience encourage the, the festival. And I would not vote to give the beautification committee the permit regretfully, but honestly, that's what we need to do. Thank you.
I think Councilmember Robert, Councilmember Robert.
Um, yeah, I agree with John Olem and Deborah and Harvey. And I think I, I share their, their angst about making this decision tonight. As somebody who's lived here for more than thirty years and goes to the pumpkin festival every year, I know what it's, the value is to me and my community and look forward to it. And I spent a lot of time this weekend, you know, reaching out to people, you know, trying to get input about it. And my conclusion is that as a policymaker, I first have to do no harm. I have to avoid harm first. You can't avoid harm and you have to mitigate it. But in this particular situation, we can avoid harm by, by canceling the event. And my concern is asymptomatic people can still spread the virus. And the current variant Delta is highly contagious, more contagious than the original COVID nineteen. My reading recently indicates that vaccinated people can actually carry and spread the virus as well. And then you have the fact that children under twelve can still not be vaccinated. And we're talking about a children's area, you know, a child that would come to the pumpkin festival might return to school, be carrying the virus, spreads it to other children, spreads it to the teachers and other adults at the school, goes into the community. There's really very little control that we can exercise over the spread of the virus. And I agree with Deborah, ideally it'd be great, you know, just block the whole area off, require proof of vaccination. If you could do that, you know, that would be great. But my impression after reading about it every morning, I got a particular listserv about it, is that things are not under control and that we're going to continue to see various spikes with various variants and various spikes in confluence with, with seasonal, you know, issues like, like flu. So, you know, I was watching the, periodically, the Giants game, you know, almost fifty thousand people in the stadium, most of, most of them maskless. And thinking, well, you know, maybe there's a way here, but basically I can't go there because first I have to do no harm. And so I'm going to side with those who were choosing to cancel the, I, I just don't see any way around. I'm terribly sorry, upset about it. I worry for our nonprofits, our artists. There are way to have a virtual pumpkin festival, still help out some people. You know, home delivery of those, you know, wonderful tri-tip sandwiches. You know, I think that would be great, but as for having the event, for all the reasons everybody else has already put forward, I, I can't. I can't go forward with it this year. So sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Robert. Councilmember Jimenez.
Yes. Well, I was actually planning to attend, you know, the pumpkin festival. It's been a few years since I last attended a pumpkin festival. Two thousand fifteen. It was the last pumpkin festival I attended. And I was, you know, last year, you know, twenty twenty. You know, it was, it was a difficult year. A lot of the work that we did in the community, why it was just that, you know, trying to prevent, you know, more people from getting infected. As you remember, you know, the ALS organization was on the front line throughout the whole year, you know, from the beginning. Providing PPE and making sure that our essential farm workers were being tested and vaccinated. And yes, pushing for that. You know, and this year, you know, it was actually, I would be looking forward to attend to this, you know, pumpkin festival. I know the need that we need the pumpkin festival for nonprofits. It is something that, that, that we need, you know, something that we do. The community has been asking about it. Having, you know, looking into the numbers of people infecting our community, especially among our essential farm, farm workers and essential workers. The last weeks or so, we've been hearing more people testing positive. We're trying to, to promote the vaccine, people to be vaccinated. One of the questions that I had for this event was, is a vaccine going to be, you know, offer? Testing is going to be offered? How many people are taking advantage of the, of the testing, you know, that we have every Wednesday here in our community? So, you know, so it's something even, you know, some of the other festivals or, or events that are happening in our community, thinking about that. So it is, it is sad that we're not, like, no, Cameron commented, it was not going to be a forty nine point five. You know, so when I see a, a fiftieth anniversary, you know, at once, yes, to think about the, the health of our community, thinking about how this could affect our community, even though we had a spreader event. You know, yes, thinking about what else can we do? Can we do gated, you know, event? How are we going to be able to enforce for people to actually wear a mask when they're not eating or drinking? You know, it is something. I do wear my mask. I wear it in the office. You know, we all wear the, our mask at the office. Going into a restaurant, even when I'm walking downtown, you know, on a crowded day, when it's just me walking, you know, I don't, I don't wear my mask. So it is difficult to make a decision like this. We know, we know, a pumpkin festival can lift the spirits of our community. You know, something I know, I was looking forward to it. Be able to celebrate, maybe see friends, you know, high school friends or see other, you know, catch up on some conversations. So it is a hard decision. It is, it's very difficult. But I'm going to stay with the, the health of the community.
Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez. Yeah, this is, um, yeah, it's a sad decision. My family and I have been volunteering the last ten years at the Great Pumpkin Photo Tent. And you see families coming who've been getting their photos literally every year as their families grow and have this whole series. So yeah, it's a closely felt family tradition to volunteer there. Look forward to it every year. It's my job to bring the Half Moon Bay Bakery Donuts for all the volunteers. Now that said, and I was thinking about the numbers too that you're mentioning, Matthew. Ninety percent of people have at least one vaccine. That's not fully vaccinated. Three co-site communities, you say, actually have some of the lowest vaccination rates, I believe you said. So, you know, even if we were able to keep it totally local, it hasn't, it would have its risks with some of the lowest vaccination rates around our own community. And I appreciate all the steps, Cameron. You said you were taking terms of not communicating it anywhere else, but you know, we're, it's the age of the internet. People know this event's happening, but you know, lots of people would show up and it's, so you know, it's a public safety, it's a public health issue. And the bottom line is this is an unbelievably highly infectious airborne disease. And I, in good faith, can't vote to have this event if I can't feel like we can really ensure the safety of all the attendees. And I think everyone else on the council has. eloquently articulated all the concerns and their sadness that we don't feel is in the best interest, which is our top priority, protecting public health and safety. So would anyone like to make a motion? Councilmember Penrose.
I have a question.
Yeah, please.
Of Cameron and city staff. Is there any possible way we could gate the festival?
It would be extremely difficult. It would be easier this year because we have a smaller footprint. But then it's not just the gating of it, it's the manning of all
access points.
dozen dozen entrance ports of entry. So I I just don't really think it's a practical thing. This is just my opinion, I haven't explored it. We've talked about it and it was just such an overwhelming subject that we just couldn't go there. Just from a practicality standpoint. I know like the Garlic Festival has their thing fenced and gated. But they have, they're almost like on a fairground situation, whereas we're on public streets. And it's just a different, it's a different thing. I I hear everyone's emotion in your voice and I I get it, I I appreciate that. There's gonna be a lot of heartbreak on our committee and also in the community. It but it's, I guess it's just one of those no win situations. I I just don't know what to say. I do feel extremely saddened for our nonprofits, we were able to save the day last year. But we're not in a position to do that this year, so unless we get another benefactor that really pitches in. So that's where we're at.
I would I I don't know how much work this would take. But I would love us to take a look at the cost and the ability of fencing it in. And and I say that because I'd like the pumpkin festival to proceed. I know that with our vaccination clinics, as we heard tonight, CERT is out there helping. I don't think manning the gates would be all that difficult. I think the cost of the gates themselves would probably be the biggest issue. If the streets are closed and they have gates on them, the streets are closed.
True.
Well, gates are one issue, there's also making sure everyone is fully vaccinated. And when I say fully, I don't mean one.
And that's what I meant by manning the gates.
Right, 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 and enforcing people wearing masks. Anyway, it's a lot of pieces, you know.
Okay. Well, I'll certainly bring this all back to our board, but I I read the writing on the wall tonight. But we will at least explore it, yes, we will.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Will it be possible, like, you know, Robert, like, must everything's possible? Because we want to do this for our community. You know, like I said, I was looking forward to attend the pumpkin festival. I've been vaccinated, you know, since, you know, I took my second shot in March. To do a push for coastal community, you know, to to be to get vaccinated. You know, I know there's a a large number of us, and I say include myself, you know, the one attending the pumpkin festival. By doing a a push, you know, for our community members who have not been vaccinated that are planning to attend the pumpkin festival.
Yeah.
To become vaccinated.
I I hear you, Joaquin. Guys, if it was January, maybe, we're we're a month away. And this, it's such a huge undertaking to do what we would need to do in the last thirty days just to put on a regular pumpkin festival, not even addressing gates and vaccinations and things like that. That I'm not feeling very positive about it. Just so you know.
And if anything, Joaquin, you know, people, if anything's getting ramped up, it's actually people will be getting ramped up to get boosters because the current vaccines are wearing off, so that's the reality, but Councilmember Reddick.
Yeah, I I think we have to give direction to cancel tonight, given that we're just, you know, five weeks out or four weeks out, doesn't make any sense to send the mama, you know, and Aaron to look at cost for various things at this point. I think we need to make it
I would like
Start to move that way, we also recommend that we cancel our summers and music festival as well. And so we would, we would like that included in the motion too. We feel that that should also be canceled. Carter Park's a very confined space and for all the reasons that all of you eloquently put out tonight about the health and safety being number one, we would strongly recommend canceling that festival as well.
Yeah, I I would be in favor of that, too. I wish we could do something like we did for local businesses back a year ago. Remember where you could, you know, go to a website and buy a gift certificate or have food delivered at your home? If there were some, you know, alternative safe way for locals to support locals. You know, in addition to the, you know, the May Coside Gams and the Pumpkin Festival, if there are way to do an online promotion for locals supporting locals, you know, I think that would be great. And if we could, you know, help support that, I would be in favor. But I do support canceling those events.
Okay, and not to throw an iron in the spokes, but at some point, we need to address the pumpkin way off, which we plan on holding regardless. We moved it down to the Long Branch last year and we were able to control the crowd situation and still get plenty of press and have a fairly successful event. We did want to bring it back to Main Street this year. Of course, it's a much smaller event and it is much more local. But at some point, we will also need permission and a permit if we're gonna hold it at the IDS grounds. So I would need a yes or no at some point soon.
I would be in favor of having the way off, it is definitely a locals gathering.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Would someone like to have a motion regarding the permits first?
I move that reluctantly, we deny the permit to have the mini pumpkin festival in October. And also to cancel the summers and music.
I'll second.
Clear call, please.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Robert?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes. I would also ask that staff, you know, let's have a look at the budget, see what we might be able to do for some of the nonprofits who will lose out by not having this pumpkin festival. And maybe there's something we can do and see what other folks might be willing to contribute privately, et cetera, might be able to match some funds. Cameron, I could, we could consult with you, being that this would be a scaled down festival. You know, how much money do you think we could have raised and, you know, figure out some number, number there that should partially compensate some of our nonprofits would be something we could look into as well.
I'd be happy to work with you on that, just so you know, not every one of our nonprofits was gonna participate this year. Just because it was a one day festival and, you know, for whatever reason, some of them decided to bow out anyway. But we did have, we did have the majority of them.
Yeah, so let's see if we can figure something out there as well.
There was general concurrence that the pumpkin way off at the IDS Hall. Seems like that was okay. I didn't hear any, okay.
Is is that what I can go back to my board with, or are you guys gonna have a little more discussion on that?
How does everyone feel about that?
I'm okay with the way off of the IDS.
Okay. Hopefully, that's consensus. I'll need to be in touch with Saul to go, because, you know, there are some logistics that day as well, but not nearly as complicated.
Great.
All right.
Thank you, Cameron.
Yeah, thanks, Cameron, for coming.
Thank you.
Sorry, we couldn't have a better
I know, I know, it was tough. I know it was tough, you guys, thank you.
Thanks, Cameron.
Okay, bye bye.
All right, moving on, still got some energy here. Couple more items here, all right.
Lots of energy.
Coffee. I think Lisa Lopez, our Administrative Services Director, Mr. Mayor is gonna kick us off on this next item. This is a presentation on PARS that has been requested by council a couple times, so we we brought it for you tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Brownstone and council. As city manager and as but mentioned, we are tonight doing an update for you actually on our Public Agencies Retirement Services Benefits Trust, which is our PARS trust. Back in two thousand nine, originally, the city council approved the adoption of a section one fifteen trust. And in two thousand sixteen, we actually approved the combination of a new one fifteen trust that would handle both our OPEB, our Other Post-Employment Benefits cost and our pension costs. Tonight, we've invited representatives from PARS and Highmark Capitals, Jennifer Mesa, Randall Yorchak, and of course, Ken, Kenneth Stiles, our senior accountant is also here in case there's any questions in regards specifically to the city. We've invited them to give you an update and and especially for the benefit of the newer members who hadn't seen a presentation to this effect. Give us a little bit of education, what this trust does for us, where we stand in terms of our funding and what we have to look forward to. So I am going to turn it over to Jennifer now.
All right, thank you, Lisa, and good evening, mayor, members of the council. Thank you so much for having us here today. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and the presentation that we have prepared for you tonight. Can everybody see that? All right. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and get started, looks like everybody can go ahead and see it. Once again, my name is Jennifer Mesa, I'm the manager and the consulting team at PARS. Along with me is also Randall Yorchak from Highmark Capital Management. The section one fifteen trust that the city has is managed by three different providers. PARS were the ongoing administrators and consultants for the plan itself. US Bank is the one that's actually holding the city's assets. And Highmark Capital Management is assisting you with the investments on the account. Slide number four, the section one fifteen trust is to put money aside for pension or retiree healthcare related expenses or obligations. It is, there is a private letter ruling from the IRS that PARS has received that confirms any earnings on the account are tax exempt. For a section one fifteen trust, the city does have the ability to diversify their assets and have equity exposure in the account, unlike the general fund reserves that you have. The contributions into the account are very flexible. The city can choose to contribute at any point in time and in any given year. Reimbursements out of the trusts are also very flexible. You can take out any reimbursements out of the trust for OPEB or pension related expenses, depending on which portion of the trust you are funding. At this point, the city has chosen to fund the OPEB portion of the account and has not yet funded the pension portion in the account at this point in time. The OPEB portion of the account, as Lisa mentioned, started back in two thousand and nine. The plan administrators or the individuals that can make changes to the program are the city manager and Administrative Services Director. The investment strategy that the city has selected for these assets is what's called the moderate index strategy. Randy is gonna go ahead and discuss that information in just a few moments and give you return information as well. Bottom portion of the page shows you the assets. The city has contributed a total of four hundred and twenty two thousand dollars into the trust. You have started taking out contributions out of the account to pay out your retiree healthcare obligations, about thirty five thousand dollars so far. And your city since inception, since two thousand and nine, has earned over four hundred and forty thousand dollars of earnings, the account. So it has been a great program, a great job by the city council to adopt this plan. You have actually earned more money than you have contributed into the trust. It's not often that we see such a great thing, but the city council has done a great job in adopting and continuing to maintain this account. The account balance as of July thirty first, approximately eight hundred and six thousand dollars. Slide number six shows you the contributions, distributions and total assets based on your fiscal year end. We just like to provide this as a graphical representation, so you can see when contributions came in, when money is coming out and the total assets as of date. Now, for the OPEB portion, the city does do what's called an actuarial valuation to measure your liability. This is done by Bartel Associates. It is a snapshot in time and the latest valuation or report that was done was as of June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Based on this information, the city currently has about forty seven individuals that may receive a benefit one day. Thirty five individuals are currently still actively working with the city, may receive that benefit when they retire. And twelve individuals are currently retired, receiving the benefit from the city. The liability for the city as follows. Based on the latest valuation, you actuary provided you with what's called a discount rate or a long term rate of return that's expected out of these kind of trusts. Your discount rate is a six percent. We are here to inform you that the city house outperformed this discount rate, but Randy will go ahead and give you all those details in just a few slides. Your total OPEB liability, approximately four hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. At this point in time, you had about six hundred and seventy four thousand dollars in the account, which did make the city slightly overfunded of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Hence why the city is now withdrawing funds to pay the retirees directly out of the trust. The retiree benefit payments are approximately twenty thousand dollars, what you see at the very bottom. At any point in time, the city could withdraw the current year's expenses plus one year prior. Now, the pension portion of the account, as I mentioned, started back in twenty sixteen. The plan administrators remain the same and this investment strategy is a moderately conservative strategy on there. The city hasn't funded this account at this point in time, so the assets remain at zero for this portion. Now, for this specific program, it is one of our fastest growing programs. We do have over two hundred and forty agencies that have adopted this specific portion of the account because of all of the changes at CalPERS and the liability and the unfunded liability that continues to go up on the account. In front of you here is your liability directly from CalPERS as of June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. We always compare the liability to the prior year, so you can see the changes and the increases that we see. Your actuarial liability for your pension program is approximately forty one point eight million dollars. Your assets at CalPERS, twenty nine point six million. And your unfunded liability at twelve point three million. So we continue to see that unfunded liability continue to increase. CalPERS just lowered their discount rate from seven percent to six point eight percent, which is actually gonna affect your liability, your unfunded status as well, will continue to increase. Market volatility that happened last year due to the coronavirus will also impact this liability as well, continuing to see these rates increase. So your unfunded status right now is about seventy point seven percent. But we'll continue to see that actually continue to go down because of the different factors that are changing at CalPERS. They're even reevaluating, lowering the discount rate even further from six point eight percent. We'll see more of that as the year end closes. Your employer contribution is approximately one point three million dollars. That is expected to increase to twenty twenty seven by one point six million, which is about a twenty three percent increase. And those two last line items are the biggest reasons why we continue to see agencies put money aside into a section one fifteen trust to start preparing for those rising rates. Slide number eleven just goes into a little bit more detail on why agencies Slide number 11 just goes into a little bit more detail on why agencies are funding these 115 trusts for pension-related expenses. First and foremost, number one, similar to your OPEB program, you have local control of the trust, you choose when to put money in, you choose when to pay additional assets to CalPERS, and the city selects the risk for these investments. Number two, we know that the rates are continuing to increase, it's just a matter of when. So it's important to start preparing today, like you did with your OPEB program, to be able to meet those long-term obligations in the future. Number three, it's a rainy day fund in case of a catastrophic event, something happens with the city. You'll have additional savings there in a Section 115 trust, protected from creditors to be exclusively used for pension-related expenses. And last line, number four, is because of the ability to diversify your assets, similar to your OPEB program, where we now see earnings greater than your contributions. You could see that also with the Section 115 trust for pension-related expenses. So now that's the administrative portion of the account. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Randy to talk about the investments. But at any point in time, please stop us if you have questions, concerns, we're happy to address any of that information.
And Jennifer, before Randall starts speaking, I just wanted to remind everyone, I'm not sure if you saw this in my staff report, but now that we are very comfortable with our OPEB trust and the fact that we are overfunded, we have a plan to now do initial deposit into and start funding the pension portion of the 115 trust this year.
Okay, thank you. So as Jennifer mentioned, the investment objective is moderate index. So a couple things for background, we actually offer five different investment objectives that have differing levels of equity and bond mix allocation. So of course, more stock, the more aggressive and the more, the higher the return. So in terms of moderate, it's 50/50 blend of stocks and bonds. So it's a very even split, of course. Half of it designed to grow, half of it designed for capital preservation. The index portion of it, the title means that the investment objective is invested in our index option, which uses ETFs and funds that just mimic the benchmark. We actually offer another style. It's called active, and it uses actively managed mutual funds to seek to outperform the benchmark. But as you can imagine, the index option is the cheaper option, lower embedded fund expenses, the expense ratio of 0.1% there. So as a matter of on a more of a shorter term, short-term being, meaning 12 to 18 months, we may allocate more to stocks or more to bonds, depending on our outlook over, you know, that timeframe. So currently, we are overweight stocks and have been for some time now. But also, we're overweight bonds, so what we are is underweight cash. I think you, as you all will know, interest rates are 0%, so we're trying to keep as low cash as possible, full investment in this environment. As far as the returns go, as Jennifer mentioned, they're doing quite well. The returns have comfortably outperformed both the discount rate at 6% and our expected long-term return for moderate index. We expect for the moderate investment objective, 5.9% long-term. So just to kind of set expectations, we might see returns in moderate going, going forward, given, you know, we've had such a, you know, a great run here. And, you know, going back to Jennifer's comment about CalPERS lowering the discount rate, and, you know, that it does make sense, but given the fact that we have seen strong returns over the last 10 years here. Moving on to the next page, what we try to do is provide as much information as possible in terms of the plan. Full disclosure on every point possible. And what we do here is break down the investment performance by asset class to show you what has performed well and has not performed well. In different market cycles and different market environments, you'll have leadership in one category, and they kind of leapfrog each other in some cases. So I wouldn't get too, you know, concerned if anyone asset class is underperforming another. As from top to bottom, the left justified black letter line item represents the return of each of the asset class or sub-asset class category is what we call those. Underneath that is the benchmark. And so because we're in the index option, you should see the returns basically approximate. And that's effectively what we see over the, over the long term is, is approximately seeing the the, the, the asset performance of the plan reflect the benchmark. So as you can see, over the last year period, equities have seriously outperformed, bonds, bonds flat. Given the fact that effectively over the last year, we've started to see a little bit of a creep higher in, in inflation and growth expectations relative to, you know, when the pandemic first hit. Or the early goings of that. And as a result, when you see higher interest rates or higher yields, bond prices go down. So that's why you see the, you know, the decline before, slight decline in performance. As far as the equities go, it's driven over the last year, small cap is the, they were the ones to rebound the most coming out of, you know, the sell-off. They sold off the most, they came back the hardest. Mid-cap and then REITs, which have also, which is, you know, as we all know, was one of the big categories that were impacted due to the pandemic. On the next slide, again, in terms of full disclosure and where we're sitting on everything, these are all the funds in the plan, as well as how much the plan has exposure to these assets, so the weightings of each. So these again are the areas in which we can tweak up or down depending on our views over, you know, the intermediate timeframe, 12 to 18 months. And then finally, on page 16 shows the trend year return of all the funds. Just for context, in terms of how they've done against each other, and, you know, where, where they're, where they're sitting in terms of a trailing year history. And finally, if you want to switch back up to the discussion slide, a few comments about our outlook. Certainly, you know, we've, I think the market is, it does try to price in a lot of risks ahead of time. So last year, I think, even last year, there was talk about variance, there was talk about, you know, a re-admersion to the virus. So I think that in many cases, I think investors already were kind of aware that, you know, we could have a resurgence or some sort of, you know, variant that, that, that could add, you know, they could slow the recovery or cause a recovery in terms of the economy and the markets to be choppy. But I think really what's, really what supported the market really is continued to help the market and the economy has been the very, you know, powerful stimulus from the federal government, as well as the Fed. Federal Reserve sets monetary policy, both have been magnanimous and, you know, dwarfs any, any stimulus we've ever seen. So that being the case, the market has responded. And then, and so, you know, as we go, go forward, we are, you know, we are, we do believe that the recovery will continue, although yes, it will likely be choppy. Now, you know, there's obviously other risks involved. I think tax law changes has been discussed, and that could cause, you know, some investors some angst, as well as geopolitical uncertainty, but that's always ever-present. And that risk, you know, does cause shocks in the market, but usually typically they're, they're shorter-lived. Any questions?
Yes. So these funds invest in fossil fuel companies?
Yeah, these are index funds. The index strategy invests in every sector and every security in the market.
Is there a possibility of investing, of not investing in fossil fuel companies?
So internally, we do have what we call ESG, Environmental, Social, and Governance options on our platform. But we haven't yet constructed that for the PARS program because it's not, it's not comprehensive. It doesn't hit every asset class in the manner in which we think is, is most fiduciary, provides the most fiduciary responsibility for, for the client. As well, our fiduciary, you know, our fiduciary obligation is to grow the assets in the plan, irrespective of, you know, the sectors that have, you know, environmental risk. So there's our fiduciary responsibility, and then there's also the matter of actually putting that, putting this operationally into, you know, into, into motion. But we have looked at it, we have looked at the potential to construct something in the future.
This council has a social responsibility as well as a fiduciary responsibility. That's why I bring that up. And if you in fact do offer a more socially responsible investment policy, I highly recommend that we go in that direction.
Well, dearly noted. I receive a lot of feedback from agencies in regards to their position, and it's really helpful in terms of context for us internally, in terms of developing a program that would fit that, you know, with, with that bias.
Thank you.
I'll just make a comment here that we'll, we'll, we'll look into this option with Randall and Jennifer between now and mid-year. I was gonna make some comments at the end when we're wrapping this item up that would point to us possibly coming back to you with a suggestion around mid-year, so we could look into that with them between now and then. But I'll get to my final comment once all the questions are asked.
So I'll just jump in then.
Sorry, I was just trying to call.
Okay, so I'm sort of interested in, you know, how this arrangement functions. So our biggest share was in large cap, yet small cap outperformed. So does the city manager or Lisa Lopez make a decision, let's shift more to small cap? Or do you, as our fund manager, you know, make that decision based on, you know, market conditions? How do we manage, you know, this, this fund from the city perspective? What, what role do we play?
Right, so it's a fully discretionary relationship. So you provide, you give us the full authority to invest the account as we see fit. And that is governed by what we term the investment guideline document. So that is initially what we set, set up in terms of the relationship is, this is how we're going to invest, is we're going to invest in, this is the allocation that we're going to use. And, you know, this is the mix of investments, and of course, you can see those vary over time. So in terms of, you know, implementing our, our decisions into the portfolio, how that works is we have an internally at Highmark, an asset allocation committee that provides direction for all the portfolio managers in terms of where their biases are and where they believe that certain asset classes should be in terms of the asset mix. And so for instance, if they think that large cap is gonna underperform, well, underweight it relative to our our strategic or longer-term targets. And then we might overweight something else to outside. So that is done on a monthly basis. We only make like four or five changes over the course of the year that are more substantive. And then, so what, how that, how that gets reflected in the portfolios is there's a team of six portfolio managers on the PARS program that take the input and direction from the Asset Allocation Committee. And then, and then we vote on, on that, that, those decisions that come out of these meetings. And then we'll make the, once we've, you know, tallied the votes and all, we'll make the changes in the portfolio. So that's, that's, you know, that's the inner workings of how we're managing the portfolio.
And does our staff get reports either biannually or annually? How often do we get reports on performance?
We provide monthly reports, annual reports as well. So we do provide reports to Lisa and Bob.
And Lisa and I meet with them once a year, physically on top of that.
So on the issue of fees, what sort of fees do we pay for management of this fund? What fees? Not much?
A great question. The PARS fee is 25 basis points, 0.25. And then the Highmark and US Bank fee is 0.35. They share a combined fee, so it's a total of 0.60 or 60 basis points.
And what is that? What's the equivalent in terms of, like, percentage of investment or dollar amount? Like, what are we talking about on an annual basis?
So it's 60 basis points of total assets. So it's not based on contributions or distributions, it's just based on assets. And if you take a look at here, the only thing missing here is fees. So the difference between what's this added up, I think it's in 12 years, you've paid about $20,000 in 12, in 12 years. And earned $440,000.
Um, how likely do you think rising interest rates are?
So it's a good question. I think that I really don't think it's a big risk, though. You know, after all that's been done, I, I, you know, I definitely concede that we have areas in which we have rising costs and the threat of rising costs. But I would sort of point to lumber prices that went up, that doubled, and then came back down and now are below 2018 levels. A point to copper that's come back down. Oil, it's, you know, it's come back down a bit after, you know, it's run up. And, and now shipping rates are at all-time highs. So I think you will have this rolling period where you'll, you'll see this tightness in certain areas manifest with higher prices, and then that gets corrected. And I guess I come back to the world is not materially different in terms of supply-demand dynamics, pre-COVID, then post-COVID. So that's, that, you know, that's, you know, on a, on a high level, the view that I think we have.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
Yeah. Any other questions before we open it up for public comment? Okay, let's open up for public comment. I think we have one.
Thank you, yes. John Oliver, you have three minutes.
Thank you for taking my comments. One of the things that, interesting about a lot of agenda items is what is not included in the agenda reports. Or whatever, so stuff, so I can prepare, so that you can prepare and have a clue what it is we're talking about. I just learned about 15 acronyms listening to these guys, and they're whipping them off left and right. I'm sure it means something. But it's pretty hard for me to keep up. So first of all, this is a criticism. Why the heck is not that power slide we just endured part of the staff report? You know, I could read that power slide in about five minutes and learn so much more than what I just learned. You know, and here we are at 11:30, 11:45, and we're going through a power slide for half an hour that couldn't spend five minutes. Okay, so one of the things I was hoping that we would have, I would expect to be part of a discussion like this is, where do we stand? How much do we have invested? How much money do we owe? How much money do we owe? So I went and looked on the internet, which, as you know, is always truthful, and found something from two thousand eighteen. And they throw all kinds of other acronyms at me, but I had time to look those up. But it looks like we're significantly short, like the actorio pension debt says eleven, twelve million dollars. Whereas the market pension debt says thirty eight million dollars. I really don't know what that means. Except it sounds like we are way behind in the obligations that we already are incurring. I went and I found, while looking up things, I came across a grand jury report. And I hope you let me go a little bit longer. And the key thing here was the Bartlett Report, which I'd never heard of until I read the grand jury report and was mentioned tonight for the first time. And it's mentioned with that part of the report is was a report about where do we stand? How much do we owe? How much do we have on hand? But the grand jury report looked at showed me was that the trend is not good. That the amount of money that's being pushed into paying for retirement benefits is growing each year. I believe it is now in two thousand nineteen, it was seven point five percent of the budget went to pay for benefits for people who aren't going to be working for the city. And the trend was up. They saw it going toward eight, nine percent. And none of this is discussed. One of the things that the grand jury report mentioned is it had never been brought to the attention of the city council, the Bartlett Report. That staff didn't see any reason to do that because it wasn't your problem. Well, that might be true, but it's going to be somebody's problem. So like, if we give somebody, say, a thirty thousand dollar raise, how much debt are we foisting on somebody else when that happens? And that somebody else is the children that you're all trying to protect. So I don't know what the right answer is. You know, how much we should spend on employees, how much we shouldn't, where we should be trying to catch up. But the trend is not good. No one's talking about it. No one's admitting it. Doesn't look like staff is sharing those details with you. I heard the consultant fire it off about an eleven million dollar number, I think, but I can't confirm it because this report isn't part of the agenda. And I appreciate the extra minute, but you know me, I could go for about ten more. Thanks a lot. Good night, folks.
Time's turn.
Yes, I would like a copy of that.
We'll post it online.
There are no other public speakers here.
Okay.
So Mr. Mayor, yes, there's other council comments. As I said, I was going to make a couple of wrap up comments. And I think a couple of my wrap up comments respond to Mr. Olin's comments a little bit. They certainly won't go into the depth of some of the questions and points that he made about the PERS system more broadly and the system that we are in, but I'll make a couple of wrap up comments that just point to our our situation. So yeah, I don't know if his numbers were correct, but Jennifer did show the one slide that showed our unfunded liability. And that is what folks key in on a lot. And that is provided to us yearly and it's adjusted. And when PERS makes certain decisions, that that may affect our unfunded liability going into a lot of factors affect the unfunded liability going into the future, but it was mentioned, I think, by Randall that they're thinking about reducing their their discount rate. That actually sounds like a positive. That actually has a negative effect on our unfunded liability, for example, because they're lowering their expectations of what they think they're going to get on their money. All that said, the number, the key number that Jennifer showed is our unfunded liability last year was about one point three million. And we expect that to increase to one point six million by twenty six, twenty seven. So again, those numbers are constantly being adjusted. We get new ones every year, but we get those in advance of our budget. And we take those numbers into account when we bring the budget to you each and every year. We have been in a position since before I got here and and except for the the last year, the COVID year, which I'll get to in a second, we have been funding our unfunded liability pay as we go. We have been able to produce a balanced budget each year and pay that cost. The question of whether that's too much money for pensions or not enough money, that's another issue, but that's what's required of us by PERS. And in terms of comparing our financial situation to other cities in California, the fact that we're able to pay that in our budget each year or have been doing so shows that we're in pretty good financial shape compared to others where their unfunded liability is much higher and they've had to take had to take steps, possibly even borrow money to pay their unfunded liability. You may recall that on top of paying as you go, the council elected a couple of years before I got here to start an internal fund to have there as a rainy day for our pension liability. And that's about a million dollars and we hold that internally. A decision was never made to put that into our one fifteen trust as Jennifer showed today and Lisa made the same comment. That's at zero right now. We've never used it, but our OPEV fund is actually overfunded. We don't need to keep putting into OPEV right now. During COVID, you might recall, we had to, we were forced to borrow the million dollars internally and use that for last year when we had some financial challenges. In this fiscal year's budget, the council already has paid that million dollars back and we're back on solid footing. And if you notice the bottom line of your fourth quarter report today, these are unaudited numbers, but that was on your consent calendar. We're actually looking very good and there's, I can't remember, about one point five million more than we expected when the budget was approved on July first. So my point in all this was we're doing pretty good. And as Lisa mentioned, we're in a position now to recommend starting to put some money into the pension one fifteen. We believe it's a better, for all the reasons Jennifer mentioned, it's a better place to put the money. And even though we can continue to pay our pension liability as we go, it is a nice rainy day fund and as they showed today, they're they're doing better, making making money on that money than we are just holding the money in the county fund. So we'll come back at midyear. We'll take both actions. We'll talk to them more about this idea that Councilmember Rarbeck had about looking into a socially conscious fund. And we'll also have a recommendation about moving our internal pension savings account, so to speak, into the one fifteen trust. That was kind of the punchline of the meeting today that we have it in place, but we've never used it, but we do think it's a good idea to use it. And as I said, I think some of my comments also hopefully address some of Mr. Olin's concerns about our financial situation and our ability to fund our pension unfunded liability costs. That's it.
We received the report. Is there anything else we need to do?
Nothing of options needed.
No, just accept the report.
Well, thank you. I would like to thank our guests, Jennifer, Randall, for Lisa staying up.
Thank you for your time. Yes.
It's your time.
Thanks very much. Good night. Well, that brings us to our last item for the night. This is an amendment to the employment contract for city manager. Do we need a staff reporter?
Mr. Mayor, I do need to make a brief oral statement. State law has special requirements for city manager contracts, so I can do that right now. Yeah, so this is an amendment to the city manager's contract which expires in the end of October of this year, the three year contract. The city council directed me to negotiate with the city manager to renew that contract for an additional three year period. And I bring forward the amendment which includes the three year extension with a ten percent increase in salary for a total of two hundred and two thousand one hundred fifty dollars per year. And that is attached to the staff report and I would have any taking any clarifying questions? And then I see there is public comment.
Questions? My question, Catherine, is salaries in line with others somewhere situated cities that we do a benchmark, correct?
Yeah, so it actually included that information, I think it was at amendment number two or three. And actually, the standard salary was was a bit below at that time. I think this does bring it more or less up to up to par. As you recall, the city manager, along with the executive staff, took a ten percent pay decrease at COVID. And so then that was brought back up. So there has been, you know, sort of a gap in terms of any salary increase over the past couple of years.
Great. No more clarifying questions. We can move to public comments.
Thanks. We have John Olin. John, you have three minutes.
Three minutes, John.
First of all, I just want to say I really appreciate working with Mr. Nesbit. He's a nice guy. And I think for the most part, he's a straight shooter, at least when he's allowed to be. So I want to say congratulations, Mr. Nesbit. Second of all, while you're granting this to, you know, this great benefit to Mr. Nesbit, you should understand, and it should be in the back of your heads, that you're imposing debt on someone's babies right now. And it's not funny. It's not funny at all. Someone's going to pay for this. And so you know, I always like to show what's going on in our city to the executives that I get to work with down in Silicon Valley. And they're quite often outraged by American politics, especially local politics, which they know I'm into. And so I ask people questions like, you know, how much, I don't ask them how much they make because that's rude. But I'll go and show them and say to the the chief accountant at that company and show them what the accountant is making in Half Moon Bay. And they are routinely shocked. And the people I deal with are far more educated than me. Most of them are obviously smarter than I am. And they just cannot fathom a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar salary. Now, I'm not saying Mr. Nesbit doesn't earn it. I just don't see how he does. I know that I work with people that have extremely challenging jobs. They work across national borders. They work with major companies that expect things to go right the first time. My dog's about to bark at a raccoon, so if it goes off, I'm sorry. And I know that they don't get nearly appreciation from the boards or whoever it is that they work for that city staff gets from you guys. So you need to keep in mind what's really going on in the world and your part in it. You're creating two classes of people in this world. Those who can afford to live here and those who can't. You're taxing away and giving away the wealth of generations in the future. I'm not some radical conservative Republican. You know me, I laugh at that crap. But you are. And it does not seem to be a concern. It isn't discussed. And so, there with my dog. Thanks a lot. Please mute me fast instead of get banned.
John, your time's up.
Dog's barking during the city council meeting.
Yeah, John, your time's up. Can you wrap it up, please?
I am wrapped up. My dog is barking. Please shut me off. Then a yell just dawned.
All right, thank you. Okay, so any discussion? Councilmember?
Frankly, I'm made very unhappy by people attacking the salaries of public executives. And you never hear or very rarely criticism about private industry executives and their exorbitant salaries and bonuses and bonuses for failure, right? I, you know, I just, I don't get it. People are working for the public. The city manager has to be available twenty four seven, right? I I think it's unfair that they treat public executives and private executives as different. That somehow private executives can make ten million dollars a year for failure and then criticize the city manager's salary. It just infuriates me. I just have to let you know that. So I think Bob Burns is key and I think we are part of a labor market for public executives that you know, supports these kinds of salaries and these sorts of benefits. And if we don't play in that labor market, we can't attract talent. And right now, we have a very talented public executive team that, you know, by and large, delivers incredible value for the Half Moon Bay public. So I support the raise and say thank you for your work on behalf of the public and work where you're regularly attacked by the public. You take a lot of grief. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Councilmember Reddick. Any other discussion points? I do work in the public sector, nonprofit, and Bob's salary is quite in line with executives. In fact, quite below, but anyhow. Great. We have a motion.
I can't says it's bedtime.
Right, can we get a motion? I'll make the motion. I move that we approve amendment number four, the city manager's employment agreement, Bob Nesbit, to extend the employment agreement for a three year period, continuing until October thirty, thirty first, twenty twenty four, to base salary of two hundred and sixty thousand one hundred fifty dollars per year.
Second.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reddit?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated. Look forward to another three years.
Hey, home stretch. Any commission committee updates? And city council report items?
They have a future agenda item.
Well, I thought we already agreed if it's around affordable housing to
No, this is different.
Oh, another one. All right.
Yeah, another one.
What do you have?
I'd like to agendize an item that will direct staff to prepare a resolution of application to annex the contiguous area known commonly as Moon Ridge. This application shall include the appropriate language, including a description of the nature of the proposal, a description of how services will be provided to Moon Ridge, a legal description of the property, various appropriate maps and secret compliance documentation. For clarity, this item will be solely to direct staff to begin preparation of the resolution of application, not the approval of the application itself.
Well, this, is this an agenda item?
Yes, they're directing staff to produce a, an application to eventually the last.
Okay, I mean clarification from Catherine. That's, doesn't sound like an an item to put on an agenda for a future meeting. Is that what you're saying?
It it sounds like asking for an item to take the first step to, you know, consider annexation. I think that could come back. Um, I think that could come back uh, to the council for further direction. I, there's several steps involved, including LAFCO approval. Uh, but with this agenda item, if there's a second, and I would suggest if Bob wants to jump in, if there's any additional clarification needed. Uh, but I think we, you know, I think we can take this direction as, uh, the, you know, bring it up item to see if we want to continue with the process.
Second.
Councilmember Riddick, thank you. Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, no, this sort of thing bears mucho discussion.
Right.
Um, and I think needs to be continued until we have this discussion around our 2022 priorities, our priority setting. You know, this conceivably could suck up a lot of staff time, that they might have to shift from other tasks. So I'm not willing to support putting something on the agenda without a boatload of research and have it be discussed amongst competing priorities, right? The council can make that decision, but we need to have those discussions. So, you know, I I'm not willing to support having that resolution on agenda. What I'm, what I can support is having a discussion relative to council priorities. Yeah.
Well, I would certainly want to have a discussion.
If we're going to talk about incorporation or annexation, we should talk about the entire coast side.
Well, I would want to have, I would want to have a discussion before we start that direction even. So I don't know for honest. Yeah, uh, there's no way I want to see any staff time on this before we actually have a discussion of whether or not and why we would annex uh, any other part of the coast side at this point. So, and we can put that on a future agenda to discuss whether or not we want to give direction to staff to start that process. So, we can do that. Future agenda item where we will discuss whether or not we want to start a process of annexation. Anything else?
Yes, and Councilmember, unless, unless Councilmember Jimenez, is yours a different point or to the same point? Go ahead, please go first.
Well, to one point is that, uh, Moon Ridge has actually uses the same zip code as Half Moon Bay as a difference to Granada, Moss Beach, and Montero.
Well, that's fine for discussion when we decide whether or not, I mean, that could be one point in that discussion. But I'm just not ready to get to, to say we're not going to start a process until we have an agenda to discuss whether or not that's something we want to do.
LAFCO would require a financial feasibility study, right? There's taxing implications, so you have to, that the process is actually quite complicated. They just don't go ahead and annex it. There's all these steps that you have to take.
Councilmember Penrose?
Point of order.
Yeah.
Councilmember Rarback asked for something to be agendized. It was seconded by Councilmember Jimenez. I believe that council has decided if we have two votes to have something agendized, that is then going to be agendized. Am I right, Catherine?
I didn't disagree to agendize it, Councilmember Penrose. I said I was not going to, we wouldn't start giving direction for staff to do anything until we discuss the agendized item. So yes, I agree. Yeah, no, I agree to agendize it.
Takes a majority to direct staff to do something. It only takes two to say, can we have a discussion on a future agenda?
Right.
And I'll just, uh, I I agree with that. And I think it's, um, clear it's a matter of getting it on, you know, working with the city manager to figure out which agenda to, you know, bring that forward on.
Right. Yeah, so I wasn't against it. No, I was fully in support of agendizing it. Is that? Is there any more to discuss than on that? Okay.
A new, a new topic.
Well, I was going to make a comment before Councilmember Jimenez, so I'll make it anyway. Um, so I agree. I mean, it it does come down to when to agendize it and and that can be discussed by you all. And I think the point was made by Councilmember Riddick that for her anyway, it would naturally feed into a discussion about all our priorities. And just a reminder, that 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 will come faster than you think. Uh, we do that in early to mid-March, uh, which sounds maybe like it's a long way away, but in the big scheme of things, that's not that far away. There's not that many council meetings between now and mid-March. And so that is actually right around the corner and and not, um, crazy. In in the meantime, and this would not be a lot of work, and this is something, uh, it I should, I do anyway. I've met with Martha, the executive officer, twice during the three years I've been here. I think it's good just to meet with her, um, to talk about these kind of issues generally. So at the very least, I I, you know, I should and could, um, schedule a meeting with her. Matthew and I could meet with her and and just talk issues like we've done in the past. And that that would be a pre-step to the first step of of you guys rolling it around and deciding where it fits in with priorities. So I just wanted to throw that out there that I'm going to put that on my list to meet with Martha, Martha Poyadas. Anyway, because it's something I probably should do every year.
Thank you. Councilmember Jimenez?
Uh, yes, um, I want to make a motion to agendize a property on Stone Pine uh, owned by the city of Half Moon Bay to be revised, uh, to build affordable housing.
Can you say that again?
I want to make a motion, uh, to agendize the property on Stone Pine owned by the city of Half Moon Bay to be revised, uh, to build affordable housing.
To revise? I'm I'm not trying to revise.
revise the the plan for the property.
Do you need the LCP?
Yes, the the plan that it was, uh, given to us by, uh, proposed by, uh, our planning commission. So I would like to revise it, uh, to look into building affordable housing to the property.
I'll second that. So we'll also put that on a future agenda.
So I guess with that, am I muted? No. So we had proposed earlier this evening, uh, seems like a while ago now, uh, yesterday evening, yesterday evening after. Um, to bring back a a a general, broader, I called it a deeper dive at the time, discussion on on housing, everything housing. We said we'd do that in November. I think it was Councilmember Penrose who said, hey, that's such a big topic. Why not think about a special meeting? I I I tend to agree with her. Uh, so we would look for a date mid-October, mid-November for a meeting, um, kind of devoted to housing. As you guys know, our meetings sometimes go long, so I think for a topic like housing, a special meeting does make sense. And I think, you know, that discussion could be in that context. Um, as as Jill and I showed today, um, you know, production of housing is challenging. And and one of the tools that's discussed a lot is is whether housing can be placed on city-owned land. And Jill mentioned the challenges with that. And of course, we do know that we recently approved the LCP and that specified, you know, where it's possible and maybe where it's more challenging. But under that context, I mean, I guess unless the council wants it at a different time, sooner or later, uh, that would, the November meeting is when we would, we would at least broach that topic, if that's the desire.
Yeah, it makes sense to be part of the same meeting because there'll be a lot of, um, questions. Yeah, uh, Councilmember.
Yes, so as part of that meeting, I also want to, um, have a discussion about, um, using 555 Kelly for affordable housing.
Do you mean to sell the property or use the property itself?
You could, well, I think there are options there, maybe donating the property to a nonprofit housing developer, you know, as our give to a project, using the house, the parking lot next to it, uh, what have you. But, um, you know, I think we have options. And I know that there are constraints on Stone Pine, whereas not so much with 555 Kelly. So I I want the discussion about 555 Kelly to be part of the mix, just to sell it and and contribute the money to affordable housing or to donate it to a nonprofit housing developer, thereby reducing their land costs.
Hey, anyway, anyway, we could combine things. Sounds more efficient to me. And we already had a future agendized item to look into selling 555 Kelly, but to build that into our affordable housing strategy. Uh, sounds great.
I agree.
Well, I think we should definitely, uh, we should definitely make that a three to four hour meeting. Agenda, so great. Okay. So, anything else? Councilmember Penrose, your hands still up? So I just want to make sure there's nothing else. Can you just have your hand up? Okay, great. Thank you. I think we're done. Good meeting. Good night.
Good night.
Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Night.
Night.